Good evening, everybody.
That's unfair. Turn that off again.
Okay. All right, good evening. Is this thing on? Yep. Hello. I don't, is this thing so real? I don't usually use that, but I know people are so busy conversating and that's a good thing, but it is about seven minutes behind our schedule, so I wanted to get started. So, let's do that. We traditionally welcome everybody. It's good to see a packed house. We realize that a lot of folks have a lot of things to say and we are encouraged to hear those things. I would say as a preliminary matter that, for those of you who are not familiar with this process, we're here to, particularly during the speakers portion, to just listen. And for those of you who've not experienced this before, you may think it a bit odd that we don't respond, no matter what is said, we don't respond, we're just here to listen. You all should know there is ample opportunity to speak to every board member, certainly to the superintendent and his staff. It's different venues to do that. You can do that by cellphone, you can do that by email, telephone, office number. And in fact, you see all the cookies in the back at the beginning of this event, we rescheduled our agenda so that our meetings that normally start at 6:30 begin actually at 6:00. And we, they begin with what we call cookies and commissioners and conversation. So, from 6:00 to 6:30, you could have approached any commissioner who was here, I think three or four of us were here, and talk to us about those things and interact with us. But it doesn't end there. Again, most of us are accessible by email or by internet, and I would encourage you to do that. So, state your piece today. I would tell you all, when we get to that portion of the agenda, you will have just two minutes. Two minutes. And our rules allow for that because if we were to allow everybody to speak as long as they wanted to, this meeting would never be over. And, more importantly, there is significant board business that we have to attend to. And we have to leave time on our agenda to do that. So, I preface your remarks with telling you what our rules are, so that you won't feel like we're disrespecting. And we will enforce that two minutes, not because we don't want to hear you, but because there's 33 other people coming behind you that we want to hear. And there's significant board business that we have to attend to so that our children, so that our children get the services that they need. So, I appreciate your indulgence. But we're going to begin this meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And since I've become president, I've decided it's important to have our kids lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, as part of the cookies, commissioners, and conversation, I was out there floating around, and I found a young man from number seven school. His name is Thomas. Thomas, come on up. And Thomas, Thomas has agreed to, they say, let the child lead them. Thomas is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Go ahead, Thomas. You got this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the brothers with the chance, one nation, only God, and justice and gentle.
Justice, bro. All right, let's give Thomas a big round of applause. Thank you, Thomas. All right, thank you. Thomas, as you go back to your seat, show us, have your parents or your grandparents stand up for us. Could they stand up? Let's give his mom a round of applause. Okay, the next order of business is we have to, as a board, approve our business meeting minutes from October the 22nd and October 27th. That was a special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, we have what we call our recognition portion of the agenda, and that's where we recognize our staff and our young people for giving us shining examples of what this district is and what it can be. We've asked Commissioner Powell to present the award today. As she walks around to the podium, I want you all to pay close attention to all the photographs that are in front of this desk. When, a couple of years ago, we had pictures on here that were here for 10, 12 years. They were kids who had long since graduated. And this Board of Education said, "Listen, we need to start recognizing the new generation of Rochester City School District persons." And how we do that is, once a month, we recognize students through an award we call I Believe Award, which recognizes a student for improvement that they've made. And then, the student who is selected identifies an adult in his or her building that believed in them, that allowed them to get to a place where they could receive an award. So, without further ado, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I ordinarily would not be presenting, but Jose Cruz, who is the liaison to School 43's three, is unable to attend tonight. So, if I could have Donald Smith come forward. Tonight, sixth grade student Donald Smith is recognized with the I Believe Award for his outstanding scholarship, leadership, and service to fellow students at Theodore Roosevelt School Number 43. Donald Smith has attended Theodore Roosevelt School Number 43 since he began kindergarten. He has served as a role model and a mentor for his peers and for younger students over the years. Donald also enjoys playing the trumpet and is an active musician at the Eastman School of Music, with five solo performances to his credit. He believes that practice, technique, dedication, and discipline are necessary to excel in music and in school. Donald plans to attend the Rochester Institute of Technology and then pursue his, a master's degree in music at the Eastman School. He aspires to play with the Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra, or Boston Symphony, one day. Donald described his fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Michelle Johnstone, as being an inspiration to him. By making learning fun while also pushing him to do better, Mrs. Johnstone encouraged him to read at a more advanced level and to perform high-level work. For her role in affirming Donald's abilities and fostering his love of learning, Mrs. Johnstone will also be presented with the I Believe Award. Mrs. Johnstone, can you come up? Mrs. Johnstone?
Speech, go ahead, Donald.
I would like to thank my parents for this and giving me a good home and education, giving me strength to keep moving on. And also, Ms. Johnstone, for giving me such an education that I think everyone deserves.
All right. Donald, 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 are you, is that your dad? Who's that? Let's give Dad another round of applause. Thank you, Bob. That's, that is what it's all about. Thank you very much, Commissioner Powell. We can give speeches and pass resolutions all night, but that really says it all. And to his entire family, is anybody else from his family here? Everybody stand up. This is a family fan. We really appreciate you all and Donald for the pride that you bring to this district. And again, what we do up here, what you all do throughout this city, watching Donald succeed is why we do what we do. So, thank you again. One more round of applause for this wonderful family. Okay. All right. As you all know, we have, we dedicate some time on our agenda for folks to speak to agenda items. And then, we dedicate some time for folks to speak to items that are not on the agenda. It just so happens tonight, nobody wants to speak to an item that is on the agenda. So, we have a list of speakers, 34 to be exact, that wish to speak to an item that is not on the agenda. Again, I would repeat, because I don't want anybody to think I'm being disrespectful, you will be given two minutes, at which time you'll hear this obnoxious sound coming from our clerk's way, and that will tell you that your time to speak is over. We will ask that you stop speaking, again, not because we want to disrespect you, but we want to remind you that the two limit, two time, two-minute limit is there to respect the time of others. So, please, if you hear that bell go off, wrap up your remarks. If you have written remarks, feel free to give them to the clerk. She'll Xerox them and make sure that everybody gets a copy. All right, let's begin with Joshua Wood, who will be filed by Thomas Aponte. Mr. Aponte, you can stand to Mr. Wood's left, so we can move right along. Joshua Wood, filed by Thomas Aponte. Oh, that's Thomas. Okay, all right. Thomas is coming back. You can sit right by that table there, sir. Thank you very much. You're, Joshua? All right. Go ahead, Thomas.
What Ms. Robert did for me at 207, she, she helped me calm down when I get mad sometimes. And sometime when, when I win fights, she let me play on her computer and play with her games and stuff. So, that's what I like about Ms. Roberts. And why, um, she, why we met in the, when I met in the classroom, she'd take me out for a walk, and she, she'd take me outside, and she'd play with me outside. So, that's what I like about Ms. Roberts. And what Ms. Robert did for us that I liked in 207, she, she did like, took us on field trips, where they're good at kid. She'd take us on field trips, she'd do triple tracks, triple treppings, and so, if you win, she would give you a prize. So, that's what I like about Ms. Roberts.
All right. The next school board member, Thomas Aponte. Nice job, Thomas. Joshua Wood, Joshua. And then, he will be filed by Jessalyn Aponte. Mr. Wood, go ahead.
Hello. I'm a current senior at Edison Tech High School. This is my last year. This is also my first year. And I want to make sure, before I leave my high school, I have to tribute to it because I love it so much. Okay. Start it. School programs matter. School builds community. Learning is important in academics and skilled trades. Education gives hope. And this particular program I'm talking about is BOCES. I feel like that would be very important for Edison Tech to have in the high school. And also, another program I want to bring back is, is the permit program for juniors, seniors. It gives opportunity to disadvantaged youth, like myself and anybody else. No money, no car equals no chance. And that's how I feel about it. And that's how, it's, it's a lot of programs I would like for the school to have, because I want to make high school a fun, fun educational. Some people say education don't have to be fun, but nowadays, it's 2015, this is a new, like, generation coming, it has to be fun. That's the only reason why I'm taking this serious now, because I have so much fun at Edison. And I also want to say, them is my second family, my educational family, and that's what awesome, that is what awesome looks like, right there. They all came out to support me, because they believe in me, and I thank my friends and everybody here for me, because students matter.
Ms. Aponte will be filed by Kelly Edwards. Kelly Edwards, and then Jessiana, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing Aponte. Ms. Aponte, go ahead.
Just bring her to the front. Yeah, bring her to the front.
My name is Jessalyn Aponte, and about I like, um, Ms. Roberts, because she did everything for me. I was sick, I was at the doctor's, she gave me balloons, and sometimes she, she always helped me do my work. I don't know how to do it. She helped me with math, and, um, she helped me with my work, and, um, and music, and I forget what the word is. She tells me, um, how to spell it, and, and my five, my five classes I go to, and I spell it. Sometimes I spell it wrong, and she helps me spell it.
Wow, that's great. Kelly, great job, mom. Excellent job. Kelly Edwards will be filed by Elizabeth Maltese.
Hello, I am a parent of School 7. I've had four children in that building since about 2004. And over the past few years, Ms. Roberts has been an amazing pleasure to watch with our children. She has been such a great addition, and she truly has made sure such things as our PTO was revitalized, so that way our kids could have a better opportunity. She has made sure to go above and beyond for our children. She has seeked to find solutions when our children and our students were suffering academically, socially, and as well as their safety. She has gone even so far as once where we needed some extra assistance in our cafeteria, and she's reached out to every parent, and she said, "You know, I just need you guys to come in whenever you can. I don't care if it's just for 30 minutes." And to me, bridging the gap between parents and staff is how you make a successful community. And I signed up for that task immediately as soon as I got that phone call. As well as I remember when she was even pregnant, there wasn't a day or a time that she missed continuing in her efforts to make sure that her amazing just emphasis was there, present with our children. As I, I've also seen her walk a child home when a pregnant mom couldn't come to pick up her child. She makes sure she still follows the rules, but she still gets the job done. You don't see that every day. I also recall when our kids had a very harsh basketball season, they were like 4 to 12, and then they had a basketball game with the staff versus the students. And Ms. Roberts told them, she said, "If you guys can beat us, I promise I'll give you a pizza party that you, you know, you'll never forget." Those kids made sure to beat those, those staff that day. And then, I also recall, Ms. Roberts, where there was a child that was having a really, wait, hold on, one more. She even refereed one of their games once because they almost had to forfeit, and she didn't want to see their faces long, so she made sure to put on her whistle and put her best basketball face on after having on her principal hat all day, and she did an amazing job. And then, there was a time where there was a student having a very awful time, I happened to be coming to pick up my kids for early dismissal appointment, and she made certain to handle that child with diligence and care, and that is Ms. Roberts every day.
Thank you very much. Ms. Aponte, how's it going?
Hi, I'm Mrs. Aponte, and I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Roberts. Um, I feel that she should stay at School Number 7, for the reason is because she has helped me and my kids a lot. She motivates the kids, not just my kids, but the kids at School 7, to come to school. And she interacts the most, I've, all teachers that I've seen and staff members, she interacts with them very much. She actually shows that she cares about the future, the education. And with my son, Thomas, she's helped a lot. With my daughter, Jessalyn, when she was in the hospital, she took, she came out of her way, left the school to come see my daughter in the hospital, and bring her stuff, bring her get-well cards from her classmates and her teachers. And, um, when my kids were having attendance problems last year, she helped me out with that. And she's willing, like, if my kids missed the bus, she's willing to come to my house, pick up my kids, and take them to school and bring them home. So, as a parent, and as a PTO member for School 7, I feel that she should stay at School Number 7.
Thank you. Ms. Maltese will be filed by Michael Herman. As Ms. Maltese takes to the mic, you may notice a pattern here, folks. We have students, and then we take parents, then we take community members and staff. And before we move on to the community and staff members, and we do appreciate your attendance here, let's all give our families, our parents, and our students a round of applause, because none of this works. Ms. Maltese?
Thank you. Good evening. I don't do so well in front of crowds and speaking, but I'm going to do my best here. This is how strongly I feel. I'm here to speak on behalf of Robin Roberts. I'm a former student of hers. She taught at my school, School of the Arts, back in 99, 2000. Also coached my softball team. And I think it's testament enough to speak that after 13 years, she is still in my life as a mentor and a role model. She has always been there for me on wavering support, guidance through my developmental years in school, and also my working career professionally. She has watched me grow as I have watched her grow, from student-teacher, to physical education teacher, to athletic director, to vice principal. She has worked extremely hard to get to where she is, and every bit deserving for what she has gotten thus far. She is an asset to the school, the district, and this community. I have seen so many sides of her, even, you know, in part-time jobs and working with kids, that the way that she would interact with them, she has a way that, that she connects that I have never seen in any other, any other teacher in my life. And I just think that she has the passion that a lot of people are looking for. She has the love for her job, the love and the caring for those kids like I've never seen, and that's something that you really need to hold on to, and it's extremely important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Herman will be filed by Ayesha Grant, and Jeff Feinberg can stand by that table too, if you're here.
I'm here also to speak about Robin Roberts, her person and her character. I think you've already heard a lot about what a special person she is. I'm retired city school district teacher. I met Robin in 1999 when I was her mentor, as she began her teaching career. She was always very enthusiastic and caring. She welcomed my suggestions, and often we talked about how she could get the most out of her students, and she always strived to do that. The next year, there was an opening at my school, and I encouraged her to apply for the itinerary position at Number One School, and she was hired for that position. So, we worked together. The year after I was her mentor, I continued to see her grow as a teacher and a person. The next year, I retired in 2001, and Robin took over my position at School Number One. I had been there for 31 years. Knowing that Robin was replacing me there made me feel pretty good about going into retirement. She really, really, really cared about our students, and I saw her continue the program that I was able to develop there. She continued her education, as you've heard. She went to school, got her master's degree in administration and education. She became a, an athletic director, and then a vice principal at School 7. We've continued to stay friends through the years. One example is I bought a used car from her, and we're still friends. She recently had a child, Sydney was born a couple of years ago, and she asked me to be Sydney's godfather. That's something that I feel is so special, and something that's become a huge part of my life and our relationship together. I watch Robin as a mother, and I see the same qualities that make her an excellent teacher. I always felt that-
I'm here also to speak about Robin Roberts, her person and her character, I think you've already heard a lot about what a special person she is, uh, I'm retired city school district teacher, I met Robin in nineteen ninety-nine when I was her mentor, as she began her teaching career, she was always very enthusiastic and caring, she welcomed my suggestions, and often we talked about how she could get the most out of her students, and she always strived to do that, uh, the next year, there was an opening at my school, and I encouraged her to apply for the itinerary position at Number One School, and she was hired for that position, so we worked together, the year after I was her mentor, I continued to see her grow as a teacher and a person, uh, the next year I retired in two thousand and one, uh, and Robin took over my position at School Number One, I had been there for thirty-one years, knowing that Robin was replacing me there made me feel pretty good about going into retirement, she really, really, really cared about our students, and I saw her continue the program that I was able to develop there, she continued her education, as you've heard, she went to school, got her master's degree in administration and education, she became a, at, an athletic director, and then a vice principal at School Seven, we've continued to stay friends through the years, uh, one example is I bought a used car from her, and we're still friends. She recently had a child, Sydney was born a couple of years ago, and, uh, she asked me to be, uh, Sydney's godfather, that's something that I feel is so special, and something that's become a huge part of my life and our relationship together, I watch Robin as a mother, and I see the same qualities that make her an excellent teacher, I always felt that Robin was a wonderful addition to the staff of the Rochester City School District, given the opportunity, I know she will continue to grow and always put her students first, she is just that kind of a person, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Rochester-
Hold on, one second, Ms. Grant, you, you were on, is that you, go on, just step around, I, I'll get, we'll make sure we get you next, go ahead, Ms. Feinberg.
Good evening, members of the Rochester City School District Board of Education, as well as supporters of all students, I come here tonight to voice my frustration with how our students with disabilities are being serviced as compared to the last thirty-one years that I have been in education, not in my speech, it's just weird what I'm seeing, I'm voicing the frustration of my fellow special ed teachers, it's not personal, it's ethical and moral, the issues that I'm hearing throughout the district, as a consultant teacher, model, I am a consultant teacher, I am a mentor, and I'm a union person, this is what I'm hearing throughout the district, and again, it's not personal, this is ethical, minimal or no access to power school grading on gen ed students, minimal or no access in general to gen ed attendance or gen ed grades of all students in the classroom, you may have students in resource, parents often want to know how they're doing in the gen ed classes or students, no access means minimal information, I find it unprofessional and degrading to our craft of special ed teachers with masters plus thirty credit hours or more, to be denigrated in asking gen ed teachers for passwords and user IDs to find out how our students are doing in those classes, one other thing, medical emergencies, if there's a gen ed student in the classroom, members of the board, I may not know what their medical alert is, because I have to ask for the password, um, of that teacher that I may or may not be working with, that, in my opinion, is extremely immoral and very dangerous, overloaded, this is what I'm hearing, oh, teachers are overloaded with CT students, no cap, although we say best practice, no more than thirty percent, so theoretically, I, I understand that, but I'm hearing from many interns, many colleagues, that have almost fifteen, sixteen, twenty, twenty-two people on their caseload, one last thing, finally, you'll hear more about this, I hope that the district considers going back to supporting students with vocational experiences, job readiness, skilled trades that are not necessarily college-bound, this continues to come up, please help our students, we love them, please help.
Thank you. Ms. Grant? Uh, Ms. Grant will be filed by Leanne Dupree and Margaret Sargent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to speak on behalf of Robin Roberts as well, I am a former employee of the city school district, and I worked at School Number Seven with Ms. Roberts for two years, um, I'm, sorry, I don't want to get emotional, this is kinda hard for me, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Roberts for two years, I am here today in support of her, I am in disbelief that this is even happening to her, when Ms. Roberts came to School Seven, she immediately jumped into action, she took charge of that school, our safety procedures were not being followed, and she revamped the entire safety and procedure plan, she, Ms. Roberts is, was a wonderful asset to the school, the students loved her, the teachers loved her, the community loves her, I'm sorry.
All right.
Ms. Roberts helped build the school spirit and more, and school morale, she created a monthly bulletin of teachers and staff, our birthdays, and she gave out every, every birthday month, she celebrated them, she celebrated our birthdays, she celebrated the students, she's always out, she's always in the community helping, she did everything for those kids, she loves those kids, she's a strong believer in treat every child as your own, I don't even know what else to say about her, she's just a wonderful person, and for her to be dealing with this and going through what she's going through right now is just not fair, she's not deserving of what's happening to her, I have letters of recommend, I have letters from staff members and other parents in the community who couldn't be here tonight, and some were just afraid to speak on her behalf in fear of retaliation, so I would like to present that to the board.
Yes, you can give that to the clerk, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
Ms. Dupree will be filed by Ms. Sargent, and, uh, she will be filed by Tamelin Pritchard.
All right, hello, I am Leanne, Leanne Dupree, a special education teacher at Northstar, we are advocating for competent leadership at our program that will advocate and provide a safe learning environment for the entire community, staff, and students alike, this will include procedures and protocols to ensure the safety and well-being of all individuals and legally mandated supports will be consistently implemented, these will be maintained as a priority instead of as an afterthought, there's a major issue at play here with the misappropriation of funding for special education services, the community needs to, the answer of where the money is for these students and where it is going, because it's definitely not to the students, they are being cheated out of an appropriate and adequate education, IEP supports are not being provided at Northstar, and as I'm hearing, not in the district, we are in a state of an emergency, our school is operating daily in crisis mode, this needs to stop today, if you are not aware of these issues, as a board, please ask Margaret Sargent, Bernice Malcolm, Teresa Root, Chris Sirianni, Dr. Jennifer Gurlias, Dr. Atua, or Superintendent Vargas, all of these people have heard of all of these issues since September, little action has occurred since, I urge you to change this continued, continued educational abuse and malpractice today, today, let's end it, guys, come on, we can do better.
Thank you. Ms. Sargent will be filed by Tamelin Pritchard and Gail Rizzo, Ms. Sargent?
Yep, good evening, in the last several weeks, the RTA has conducted a survey of special education consulted teachers, self-contained teachers, resource, and general education teachers, there were twenty-three questions asking if and how special education was working in our schools, overall, the results have shown that it is not working, and our students are not receiving the services that are required on their IEPs, the survey showed that the consultant teachers had more than three preps or grade levels, that they were required, required to schedule with students, fifty po, fifty-five percent said they were unable to meet more than once a week with their general educa, general education teacher to plan, eighty-seven percent reported there is no common planning time whatsoever built into teacher schedules, how can you plan for your students if there's, you can't do so with your colleagues, ninety percent of the consultant teachers reported at the special education department did not adequately prepare them for their role as a consultant teacher, because it was poorly rolled out, and there's no support for the implementation of the model, ninety-five percent of resource teachers reported no common planning time either with their generation, general ed, general education colleagues, this was also reported by the general education teacher saying they can't re, meet with their special ed colleagues either to plan for their kids, so there's no differentiation happening because they can't plan, teachers also reported that they have so many consultant teacher, consultant students in their classroom, that it is very difficult for the consultant teachers to even meet the needs of the students, eighty-three percent of the self-contained teachers reported the district has provided no, not enough adequate social, emotional, behavior, or instructional supports for their programs to be successful, the two highest needs that they indicated were more behavior specialists in the schools, to work with their children, and more social, emotional support for their students, so what does this tell you, that our students are not getting what they need, I'm almost finished, and they're not supporting teachers, our most neediest of children are not getting the education they deserve, if you don't believe me, I will share with you the written responses from the last two questions from the survey, so you may read for yourself what the teacher is saying about how the system is broken, and how our students are not getting what they need, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sargent, um, Tamela, Tamelin Pritchard and Gail Rizzo. Are you Ms. Pritchard or?
I am Ms. Pritchard.
Hello, Ms. Pritchard.
I'm here on behalf of my students and all of the students at Edison who need a safe educational environment, please, please commit resources for the entire year, not just until the storm passes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rizzo will be filed by Pa, Paula Linza and Rick Amico.
Members of the Board of Education, my name is Gail Rizzo, and I have the privilege of being a special education teacher, as well as the chairperson of special education for the Rochester Teachers Association, I am here this evening to speak to you regarding the increase of assaults on the teachers and students in our schools, when did it become acceptable for teachers to have to teach in fear, or for our students who should feel safe in school, have to worry on a daily basis? I have been a special education teacher since nineteen ninety-two, and I have seen many changes occur, some for the better and some for the worst, currently, our teachers are being assaulted on a daily basis, not to mention our students, even though our teachers are being assaulted, or in fear of being assaulted, they continue to put forth a great deal of effort to educate our most fragile population, as the needs of our students as well, as an increase in our student population continues to grow, we are calling upon you to provide schools with whatever is necessary to decrease the violence before a tragedy occurs, thank you.
Thank you. Paula Linza will be filed by Rick Amico and Michael Tobin.
Good evening, members of the Board, and Dr. Vargas, I have been an employee and a special education teacher in the district for thirty years, and this is the first time that I've felt the need to come and voice my concerns to you about our students not receiving the identified needs on their IEPs with fidelity, the information is there and accurate, but may or may not be implemented on a daily basis for what the children need, and, if there's been a CSE meeting, it's, it, uh, was identified that they may need testing accommodations or program accommodations, and depending on who is working with the child and what site they are located in, those services may or may not be provided consistently, there's a desire by everyone in the room for the best for all of our students, and I would like you to consider looking at what's actually occurring versus what's on paper, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Linza, Rick Amico will be filed by Michael Tobin and Cannon Doyle, Mr. Amico?
Good evening, commissioners, good evening, everybody, it's good to see everybody out here tonight, I'm just speaking to you tonight, I'm a nineteen ninety-one graduate of Edison Tech, it is my home school, I'm a city school graduate, and I went to city schools all of my twelve years, and it was the greatest experience in my life, and I would never do anything different, and my students today, it is an honor to teach them today, social studies, one of them spoke here tonight, he was number one, Josh Wood, and, uh, it is an honor to teach them every day, it is an honor to teach with my colleagues each and every day, they're a great staff to work with, and I'm just here tonight because I believe at Edison, we need to bring it back to what it was when I was there, we need to bring back the shops that were there, we need to bring back aviation, which I was in, we need to bring back and expand the auto mechanics program, we need to bring back cosmetology, we need to bring back food service, the skills that the students need to make it each and every day in their lives to be successful, we need that back, and we also need, when I was going to school there, not once did I feel unsafe there, and it needs to come back, we need to make that building safe once again for each and every one of my students, and each and every one of my colleagues, and what needs to happen is we need to keep the resources that you have brought over there now until the last day of school, not when the storm blows over, as Mrs. Pritchard said, it needs to stay there for all of us to be successful in what we do each and every day at Edison Tech, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Michael Tobin will be filed by Cannon Doyle and David Wertz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my name is Michael Tobin, and I'm a teacher at Edison, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my students and my school, it's clear by the showing here tonight how important Edison is to the students and staff who spend the day there, and it is my intention to make it equally clear the challenges Edison is currently facing, in ten years in the building, I have seen and been a part of every single change since Edison first divided into four schools many years ago, I can tell you without exaggeration that I have never experienced the violence and the chaos that the students and staff have experienced this year, you've heard the statements of my colleagues, some of you may have witnessed the violence and chaos yourselves, until our building is safe, our students and our school cannot be successful, until our building is safe, Edison cannot return to its former glor, glory, until our building is safe, our students are not getting the education they deserve, we teach our students to use evidence to back up their claims, I'm going to share the evidence that supports mine, since October fifth, I have personally documented nine fights in the building, twenty-two instances of drug use in the building, including one directly in front of an administrator's office, six instances of gambling, fourteen instances of defiant or truant students directly disturbing classrooms, twenty-two instances of vandalism, theft, or destruction of property, and five assaults on staff members, at Edison, we have seventy-seven recorded instances of violence and chaos in thirty-one school days, I am asking the school board to support the students and teachers of Edison, I am asking the school board to continue to provide the resources needed to maintain order in the halls, I am asking the school board to provide our most challenged students the support they need in a location where they can be the most successful, and most importantly, I am asking the school board to continue to listen to the students, teachers, and staff of Edison, it is only with your support that those who spend every day at the Edison campus will be successful, it is only with your support that Edison will return to greatness, and it is only with your support, our students will get the education they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Tobin. Mr. Cannon Doyle will be filed by David Wertz and Amy Rineery, Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, I am here to speak on behalf of my students and my school at Edison Tech, the atmosphere there makes learning process extremely difficult, as you heard from Mr. Tobin, there are fights daily in the hallways, there are regularly over a hundred students in the hallway during class instructional time, skipping, being disruptive, and disrupting the educational process, I would like to invite the members of this board to come and personally witness the challenges of Edison, thank you.
David Wertz will be filed by Amy Rineery, is Mr. Wertz here?
Rineer.
Okay, um, Ms. Rineer, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Rineer.
Rineer, I'm sorry, Tina Diaz is next, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Schools are supposed to be a place of learning, for so many of our students, school is the safest place they will spend their day, they know that when they come to school, they'll be warm, they'll be fed, and an adult will be there to watch over them and keep them safe, but so many of our schools right now have become the complete opposite, I've been spending most of the last month visiting schools and speaking with teachers and students, I have to say that I'm saddened by what I have seen and heard in these schools, what saddens me, me the most, is the student who is there to learn, who is in their classroom with their books and their homework every day, who is there to fulfill their dreams of becoming whatever they want to be, who watches day after day that one student who is interfering with that learning, many of our city schools are not safe places today, they're not a place where learning is the main focus, as I speak with people and hear their stories, I'm not shocked anymore, I'm not shocked because these behaviors have become the norm, it's almost expected that an adult or student will be sworn at, disrespected, ignored, insulted, threatened, intimidate, intimidated, and now assaulted on a daily basis, we are teaching some of our students that it's acceptable to be, to disrespect authority, how is allowing this behavior preparing our students for careers or life after school, how is allowing them to wander the halls instead of being in a classroom, preparing them to even get a job, how is allowing them to be respectful to adults and others make them productive members of our society, I urge you to think about the students that we have that come to school every day to learn.
Tina Diaz, Tina Diaz to be filed by Nicole Frazier and- Tina Diaz, Tina Diaz to be filed by Nicole Frazier and Roberta Gammons. That's fine.
Good evening. This is Tina Diaz. Tina Diaz is one of our secretaries at school number seven and she is here on behalf of our vice principal, Robin Roberts. Robin was not granted tenure this year and was consequently removed from our building. As you have heard from other members of our school, she is a revered person in our school, in our building. She is here, Tina is here in hopes that Ms. Roberts will be granted a year extension to continue work towards her tenure because there are many of us that feel she deserves it. In her short time with us, she has done so many wonderful things. For instance, she wrote the Field Fueled Up to Play Program, which resulted in one of our students being selected to attend a kickoff kid day with the Buffalo Bills. Our student Marcus got to attend a Bills game with his family and he also got the opportunity to talk about our school. You may remember seeing that on TV, on the news. She also created a sixth grade t-shirt contest, which was awesome to see the creation of these children. Sixth graders were given a contest to display their artwork on their graduation t-shirt. Ms. Roberts took care of that. She created that. She also created the number seven school trivia contest, which you heard Thomas speak of. The children are extremely excited about that and eager every morning to be the first one to solve that trivia question. Then she came up with something else and you're going to hear more of this in a few moments. This is called the "You Are Remarkable" cards. These cards are written out by peers and parents and students alike, recognizing something wonderful that one of our staff members, one of our students, or one of the children in the school have done and are then posted on a bulletin board outside the main office. And it is a really great morale booster, especially for teachers who hear from their students saying how wonderful they are. It is our hopes, after you hear more about Robin, that you may consider, please, giving her an extension on her tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Diaz. I hope you feel better. Nicole Frazier will be filed by Roberta Gammons and then Ruth Card.
My name is Nicole Frazier and I teach at Edison. Every day when I come to school, I see students eager to learn, teachers eager to teach. There's a problem. I don't feel safe when I walk through the hallways, coming in and out of my classroom. I have to pass through stairwell where almost on a daily basis, students are using drugs. There's gambling in the bathroom. I fear for my students that they won't learn what they need to learn. As I look at their schedules, they're not given the proper classes. Students that have disabilities are not receiving their special education services. They need extended time. They need a teacher who is qualified to teach them. They need what's on their individual education plan. They are not receiving their services. Every day, they ask, "I need help. I'm struggling to learn." Who is there in the classroom to help them? Who is going to give them the help they need so that they can graduate, so they can pass their Regents exams? We are not offering the review classes that students need to pass their five Regents exams. We will have a continued number of students who fail to graduate if we do not change things. We need to make our schools safe. We need to provide the educational plan, the services that they need so they'll pass their exams. We need to offer classes that students can be successful in and we need to offer things that will help them graduate, like review classes. Please, School Board members, make my school safe. I'm terrified to come to my building. I do not want to be assaulted like those teachers who were assaulted. Please, make my school safe. Give the kids a education that they can go get a job, that they can go to college, that they can be college and career ready. Thank you.
Roberta Gammons, Roberta Gammons will be filed by Ruth Card and Josh Mack.
Thank you. My name is Roberta Gammons. I'm one of three speech-language pathologists at school number seven. I am taking many of my comments this evening from a binder that Ms. Robin Roberts prepared as part of her tenure process that was never even reviewed prior to the decision being made that she will not be returning. We have been working with Ms. Roberts since she was assigned as assistant principal in December of 2012. We feel that she has greatly contributed to school safety, student performance, attendance, school climate, and parent participation. She was our administrator that was assigned to work with us with our PTO. And the year that she was working with the PTO, we never had more comments from parents about how nice it was actually to see an administrator at an event, at an evening event. Administrator should be at every evening event. Ms. Roberts is a very positive, happy, friendly individual and she can be seen anywhere in the building, on school grounds, in the cafeteria. She makes herself visible. She's involved in any project and you know if she's involved, it will be done and it will be done right. She is also a team player. She's been seen playing basketball with the students, hosting a fun lunch with them, dancing during a multicultural celebration, and talking to students and parents alike. She knows the students by name. She has always, and this is what bothers me the most, Ms. Roberts has always tried to improve the school's safety. She did attend the Thirty Hours CERT training course and she had that certification as well as a couple other optional certifications that she did. And so she's part of our school safety committee and she has put together posters that we all have in our building and on the wall and we do these drills all the time. Nobody else on that committee has any training. So right now, we have nobody on that safety committee that has any training. I really was shocked to hear that she was not granted tenure. She's really a valuable asset to school seven. We find it difficult to believe that she could be let go without being allowed to present her documentation. Please allow her three years of service to be unbiasedly reviewed before making any final decision regarding her loss of tenure or any other job in the district. It's the right thing to do.
Ms. Gammons, Ms. Gammons, I don't know if you had a chance to finish that, but if you'd like, you can leave it with the clerk so that we can read it in its entirety. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ruth Card will be filed by Josh Mack and Emma Walker.
Ruth Card just sent me an email and she's unable to attend. With your permission, may I read her speech?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay. "To the Board of Education, I was going to speak at the meeting tonight. However, I'm unable to do so, but I do want you to know the following. We still do not have PMAPs for positions in our building because positions have not been created. This does not make sense to me when we have a third grade student who has to get consultant services and two 1211 classes with no permanent teacher. We have asked for Leah Sacatella to be hired for one of our 1211 positions since June and nothing has been done. She is an outstanding teacher and is well-liked by the staff in our building. The other 1211 classroom is on its eighth sub and there are four adults in that room which has no structure and no teaching with severe behaviors. It has been stated by HCI that no positions have been added to our building. Why not? We still do not have a case and no support in our building. I was told by Dr. Vargas that I would get paid for picking up a third grade consultant student. When I called HCI this afternoon, I was informed no .2 position was created. However, there is a PMAP. Where are the PMAPs for each of these positions and why are they not being completed? Central Office is hurting these students, not the teachers. It is the students who are not getting state and federal mandates. Why are these positions not being created so we can service these students correctly? Why is the district holding program reviews on student IEPs now when no parent or teacher requested them? When I spoke to the New York State Special Education Department in Albany, they informed me there is no such thing as a program review. They should have been done in the summer. Not only that, legal documents are being generated from Central Office within improper names and positions. It is amazing to see so many errors coming from Central Office. It makes us all look ignorant. I am disgusted with what is taking place and it continues to get worse. Why is nothing being done to fix this? Please help our district get back on track. Please support us and come to our schools to discuss these issues because it's not just school twenty. These are many schools in need of support."
Thank you. Josh Mack will be filed by Emma Walker and Angela Guza. Mr. Mack?
Good evening.
Good evening.
January will mark my twenty-fifth year in this district. I've worked in numerous capacities, numerous buildings, maybe ten or eleven buildings, numerous capacities over the years. And I'm really disappointed in where we've come and how we've gotten where we are now. I had some plans to talk about the policy, but when you hear, you know, I love the Rochester City School District. I love the teachers, the parents, the community. This is a vibrant community that has a lot to offer. And when I hear my colleagues talk about the problems, these are things that could easily be resolved if we had the right type of leadership and folks who are committed to understanding what it takes to get this district turned around, get this tanker that's moving slow turned in the right direction so we don't have to continue to live like this. We are not providing our students what we need, what they need. This has always been about personal politics, the individual, who's the person who's going to be the next person, who's going to be the person at least, as opposed to reaching from within, finding our strength, looking for the people who are systemically committed to this district, the kind of folks who have been here, who've shown that they're committed to the students, and bring these people and elevate them. Instead, we continue to do the same thing over and over again and think it's going to get better. I'm saying at this point, I am ashamed. And I supported a number of you all on the School Board and I still do because I think you really want to get it right. But you have to understand that we didn't bring you guys on board because we thought you had the answers. We brought you on board because we thought you were going to bring in the folks that do have the answers so we can get this situation right. This is not necessary. This is a small city. It's not necessary that we struggle the way we do. It's not necessary that our students are being allowed to run amok in the schools and terrorize teachers and not get the appropriate response that they deserve because you guys are playing politics instead of being educational leaders and saying, "We're going to set the standard and this is the way it's going to be." Okay? If you look around in your surrounding districts, you do not have this response. You have people who take care of their children, they give them the appropriate disciplinary supports they need, they give them the appropriate academic supports they need. In Rochester, we watered down the process and I still can't understand why we're doing it. So if you want to eliminate the pipeline of prisons, start by looking at yourselves and saying, "What is it that you're not doing to provide this community what it needs?"
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Emma Walker will be filed by Angela Guza and Don Murphy. Ms. Walker?
Waller. Hi, my name is...
Waller?
Yeah. My name is Emma Waller.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's misspelled.
I know. My name is Emma Waller. I work at Edison and I'm here to speak on behalf of my students and my school. As you have heard before, there have been several reported assaults against students, SSOs, and staff, and I was one of the staff members that has been assaulted. I still occasionally have headaches from my concussion that I received as I was pushed into a brick wall. There is rampant drug use on our campus. When we walk through the hallways, we have a lot of kids in the hallways. We have students that don't have schedules or they claim they don't have classes, rather. In the stairwell, when asking students in a very polite manner to please either get to class or get to lunch, but not to be in the hallways, accost it with foul language. I'm sixty-four years old. I'm old enough to be their grandmother and I demand their respect. This past weekend, I had the privilege to go to a meeting that was hosted by Ms. Elliott and I learned a lot. At that time and now, I am asking the Board to please come to Edison to witness our situation.
Angela Guza filed by Don Murphy and Emily Crowley. Ms. Guza?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Angela Guza and I am a fourteen-year veteran of the Rochester City School District. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my colleagues at Rochester Early College. Our concerns about special education are grave and numerous. Firstly, we are concerned with the many inconsistencies that exist. IEPs are created by committees, committees of people that have worked with children and know their strengths and weaknesses. However, with the new change in the district policy mandating that we change students with disabilities programs to ones that are not comparable. Students who used to have two teachers in their core subjects were now being changed to consultant teacher model, where the special education teacher only pushes into the class a few times a week. Teachers were told at CSE that we needed to limit the supports that students were going to get, otherwise it would be no different from inclusion. IEPs are individualized plans. They are supposed to take the child's needs into account, not our budgetary or scheduling needs of a school or a district. IEPs are changed to remove resource classes, to open up room in a child's schedule. However, a committee of people who work with that child recommended resource as the program necessary for that child to succeed. These and changes like these continue to happen to accommodate our needs, not the needs of our children. The change to the consultant teacher model also allowed the district to overload our blended classes with more students with IEPs. Originally, we were told that the number of students with disabilities in a consultant teacher class would be no more than thirty percent. Some of our ninth grade classes have nearly fifty percent and that doesn't include the students with 504 plans. When a janitor teacher sees ninety to one hundred and fifty students a day, they cannot possibly individualize instructions for even thirty percent of that. Moving forward, we need to truly consider the needs of our most needy and vulnerable children. We need to hire more school psychologists, social workers, and counselors. We need more community services inside the schools to help families and the students and we need to bring back vocational training because these kids learn hands-on and they need the hands-on training. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Murphy will be filed by Emily Crowley and Maria Hambas. Ma'am, you are?
I'm Emily Crowley.
Hi, Emily.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want you to take a good look at me because I'm a person who has never been afraid of anyone or anything and those of you who know me know that. I'm scared to go to school. I'm scared to go to work and I love my job. I've been doing it for fifteen years. For fifteen years, I've been able to walk through the door with a smile on my face every morning and hug my children because they're mine. And now I'm scared because some of my children at Edison might hit me, might hurt me, might hurt some of my other children. Who wants to go to school in an environment like that? Who wants to go to work in an environment like that? I came here with some things that I wanted to say, but it hit me, I've never been scared before. And I'm scared. And if I'm scared, how do my children feel? You need to do something. You need to do something now. It's not a huge number of children who don't want to be there, but it's enough. It's enough that a grown woman with her own children is scared that I might not make it home.
Maria Hambas will be filed by Deborah Hamza.
Good evening again. My name is Maria Hambas. I'm the instrumental music teacher at school number seven and I am here speaking again on behalf of Robin Roberts. First of all, I would like to congratulate you and thank you all for your understanding and the importance of the arts as a whole, educating a whole child, and I appreciate what you've done for our district. And I do believe we have the largest arts department in Monroe County at this time. Thank you. I'm here to talk about Assistant Principal Robin Roberts. When she first came to our school several years ago, I introduced myself to her. When she first came to our school several years ago, I introduced myself to her. She then told me that she plays the violin. Without hesitation, I invited her to join the orchestra for the holiday concert, which of course she said yes. You should have seen the faces on the children when they saw her take her seat at the first rehearsal. But when she started playing, they were in awe of her. She has since inspired many of our students to practice harder, myself included. Because of her support for the instrumental music department at our school, many of our students have auditioned for soda and ultimately accepted. While I'd like to think that I had more of a hand in that than she did, she was the catalyst in some cases. Ms. Roberts has always considered the students at number seven her own children. Every child, every day is our motto. To give you another example of her character, when one of our kindergartners passed away from cancer last year, she organized a beautiful, touching event for Michaela's family. This included not only asking our students to perform, but she invited a friend of hers who is a violinist with the Rochester Philharmonic Orchestra to perform one of Michaela's favorite songs. Knowing Robin's compassion for our school family, he volunteered his time freely. This is an event that I don't believe her family will ever forget. Since attendance is a big part of her job and is as important to her as it is to all of you and all of us, she created an attendance contest. There is a chart for every class which is on display in the school. This chart shows weekly attendance by classroom. The classroom with the best attendance for the week receives a pizza party. She has worked with a local pizzeria to donate pizzas in our school. I've attached a photo of that chart for you to see. We have had several classes of 100% attendance. As you can see from all of this and from what you've heard myself and others say today, Ms. Roberts goes above and beyond to make her school, our school, a family. She is reliable, friendly, caring, loving person who has been a great asset to our school since arriving. With morale at its lowest in the 17 years I've been at number seven, to lose her would be detrimental and indeed it would be a shame. Please consider granting her an extension for her tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Cork. Richard Cork, are you Maria Hambas?
Deborah Hamza.
Deborah Hamza, I'm sorry. Come on up. She will be filed by Richard Cork and Maria Padula.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Vargas. My name is Deborah Hamza. I'm a 15-year veteran at the Edison complex, all of which have been there. I'm a previous board member for Monroe Bosse's One, but my most important jobs are mother and student advocate. I'd like to talk to you about public safety in our school building, using accounts taken from the student's perspective in a journal-writing activity during their ELA classes. Two focused vocabulary words were presented to students, and they were asked to use the words correctly in a sentence. I believe that these writing samples are telling with respect to the safety issues we have at Edison. First word, pandemonian. A student replied in her journal, "The cafeteria at Edison is an utter pandemonium." Another student used the word, and I am paraphrasing, to describe what they felt was unacceptable hall behavior during class time, and that they felt that the negative hall behaviors were disrupting their classrooms. Second word, viewpoint. A student responded that, and I am paraphrasing again, "In their viewpoint, they predict escalating violence will occur at this school within the next five years, and sadly, they hope to be out of this building before that happens." It's easy to dwell on problems and pass the buck. I'd like to propose a solution. Please, help us make Edison a safe place by ensuring correct student placement. Upperclassmen with five credits or less do not belong here. They are contributing to the safety issues in our complex, and I invite you all to come and witness what our students experience every day of the week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard Cork. Richard Cork to be filed by Maria Padula. Squark? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah.
Surprised?
Well, um, Jean-Paul Sartre said one time, "No one is innocent." It's one of those things I learned in college and didn't understand it for about 25 years, 30 years. Now I understand it. I'm thinking about how we all work for a system. And I'm thinking how it's do or die time now, perhaps literally. And I'm thinking how, if something does happen, none of us can be considered innocent if we haven't done what we can do. You know, that's part of why I came to speak tonight. I felt like if I didn't, I wouldn't be able to have a clear conscience. I've been in public education, urban education for 20 years now, and I have to say, you know, it's been rough a lot of times, but I have never felt like I was in a semi-combat situation before. To, to relate to something someone else said also, how can somebody think about learning anything when they're thinking they may have to go into hand-to-hand combat at any moment? We all know Maslow's hierarchy of human needs, you know? When you're down at that basic protect yourself, security level in the pyramid, you can't be thinking about Plato, Aristotle, or anything the Egyptians might have done 3,000 years ago, regardless of how relevant it is to current events. Again, I, I think it's do or die time now. I see the, the number of weapons around on the street. It seems like every other kid or guy I see has one of these little knives clipped into their pocket. I see how kids can get their cell phones into class and this and that when they want to. So I assume they can get other things into the building if they want to also. And I'm afraid the violence will not involve fists. I'm afraid it could go further than that, and I, I want us to do something before something like that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Padula. Maria Padula filed by Cassandra Walsh and Andrea Ebner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm going to take the topic back to Robin Roberts. For those of you that don't know, maybe you've been able to figure it out, but she was denied administrative tenure. I'm including an extensive list of the programs and initiatives that Ms. Roberts has implemented at our school, all of which have had a tremendously positive impact on our school climate, environment, and most importantly, our students. The faculty and staff were concerned and stunned to learn that there was even a question that Ms. Roberts would not be considered for tenure in the Rochester City School District. Sadly, we have seen far less professional administrators than Ms. Roberts have tenure granted without question. How can this be? After gathering further information, it has become apparent that her tenure is being denied by those who have a personal agenda. We are uncomfortable sharing the details of this information within a public forum, but it is clear that Ms. Roberts is the victim of an outrageous injustice that has absolutely nothing to do with her qualifications and abilities as an administrator. I am urging board members to look further into this situation. We, the staff at school number seven, would be more than willing to explain the truth behind this disservice to our school, our district, and our profession. If Ms. Roberts is not granted tenure, the Rochester City School District will be losing one of the most dedicated, hard-working professionals ever found in this district.
Cassandra Walsh will be filed by Andrea Ebner.
Hi. Thank you for allowing us to have this forum and speak with you. As a lifelong city resident and a 15-year special education teacher in the district, I'm here to talk about the concerns regarding the switch from the ICOP model to the consultant teacher model at the middle and high school levels of our district. One of the concerns is that I feel it was presented under somewhat questionable pretenses. A lot of parents were told that this was a lateral shift and that the, the students would basically be receiving the same services, it was just under a different name. And that's not the case. It's a different service. It's a less restrictive service, and it is appropriate for some students. I have some students that flourish under a consultant teacher model, but not every student does, and not every student should have had to switch from an ICOP model to a consultant teacher model. I think that forcing all middle and high school students to a consultant teacher model is bad for parents because it was deceptive. I think it's bad for teachers because we're now told that we don't have access to the grades or the attendance or the information for any general education teachers because we don't need them, because we're only responsible for our special education students. That is divisive in a classroom. That's not right. How am I going to tell a regular education student that I can't help them because you're not on my list? That's, that's just immoral. It's also bad for teachers because we're now being told that we are only responsible for SLOs for special education students. So the teachers have no reason to work together other than the fact that they have morals and conscience to do so regardless of what they're being directed to do. But worst of all, this shift is bad for students because with the shift, there's no longer any limit to any number of special education students within a classroom. There was that provision under the ICOP model. And while we were told that ideally we would have natural proportions of no more than 30%, that is not happening. It's not happening in my building, and from what I hear, it's worse in others. I have at least half of one of my classes that is special ed versus regular ed, and I have had students who've come to me and said, "I really like this teacher, Ms., but I don't like how she teaches the special ed students because she only goes to the special ed students in the classroom, and I feel singled out." And at a middle and high school level, that's not right. Students shouldn't be singled out. I feel like we're on a slippery step in the wrong direction and that we need to stop it before we end up back in a broom closet with our three children that nobody wants to talk about.
Ms. Ebner?
Good evening. My name is Andrea Ebner, and I'm a teacher in the Rochester City School District. I've taught our beautiful children for 16 years. I'm before you today to express my extreme concern for the current state of our schools. For 16 years, I have come to work every day, ready to teach. I love what I do, and I can say with confidence that I am a good teacher. I work with dedicated professionals that also do their best every day, even under the most challenging of circumstances. Our first job is to keep children safe. No matter what instructional strategies, interventions, or good first teaching practices we put in place, how can our children learn if they're not in a safe and secure environment? I absolutely believe in restorative practices. I believe in positive behavior supports. They work, they worked for me, but they don't work in isolation. The policies that we are being told as teachers by administration that are being put in place are dangerous and irresponsible. Children and staff members are being assaulted and injured daily. Imagine a kindergartner, a four- or five-year-old witnessing a violent fight from seventh and eighth grade students on a regular basis. Crimes, as you have heard, are occurring in our schools. We can't just ignore that. We can't just not address it, and, and address it with every available approach and just hope that it will change. We are in charge of other people's children. We can't allow this to continue. What about the children who have to sit and witness this violence and disruption day after day? How can they trust that we can keep them safe when they see their own classmates and teachers getting assaulted? How traumatic for them. The children deserve to be taught in a safe and orderly environment. Our students with emotional, behavioral, and academic needs deserve to have the appropriate resources. We need proactive and reactive procedures in place to keep our schools safe. When I hear an administrator say, "She can't call the police until she calls her supervisor for permission," how can I not be outraged that precious time is wasted in case of an emergency because the leaders in this district don't trust our administrators to make those kinds of judgment calls without permission? Precious time can't be wasted when it comes to protecting children, and if you don't believe what you hear, please come see it for yourself. We're screaming for help. How can you not hear us? If we are ignored and a tragedy occurs, I will never be able to live with myself. Can you?
First of all, I, I want to, I want to thank all of our speakers for being, for being so respectful of the time of others. It was appreciated. We got a chance to hear from everyone. We are about to take a break, but before we do, many of you may know who watch these proceedings know we typically have a superintendent's report, which now includes a, a report from our EPO superintendent. But Dr. Vargas and I conference very briefly here, and we thought that rather than wait for us to take a break and many of you all would leave, it would be important for you to hear his remarks with respect to some of the things that were said today. Now, let me caution you. We listen to you. I ask with respect and diligence that you listen to him with respect and diligence. Not once did anybody up here interrupt you because we respect your thoughts and your, your concerns. I would ask that you show Dr. Vargas the same consideration. Thank you, Dr. Vargas.
Well, thank you. Basically, I'm not going to say anything new to you because I know you live with this challenge every day. I had a conversation with Dr. Vansky today, and there are long-term, real, immediate solutions that you need. Like, for example, a teacher, a North Star should not still be waiting for material or computer that our children desperately need. You need a central office and the administration will, will not point a finger, but I, you heard me since day one that this need to be a flexible organization. And the entire administrative structure of this system better listen to teachers and students and families. Why is it that when we have a surplus or computer, we cannot get it into the classroom? When we spend more than any other district that I know of for this side in the area of technology? So money is not the problem. So what is the problem? I think some of you say politics and all kinds of things because some people say it's communication. I think I'm speaking in English. Getting to a computer to a classroom to a teacher shouldn't require my intervention. So having said that, this, that's an example of short-term solution. For example, a child that haven't been in school for 60 days, who is 21 or 20 and only had three credits, should not be giving false hope that he or she going to be successful at Edison. Why is it that common sense like that requiring an experience in resistance at some level to send those students to the appropriate place? And why is it that instead of pointing finger, we are not working together to solve that? Those are type-one problems. They have solution. We now have significant number of children that need a specialized school. I met with a family this week. The child got rejected for a day treatment. So I'm now caught between a situation, do I put this in home instruction? Or do I do my best to make sure that we respond to the need to what we have in the school system? This is one of the few systems, and I will be leaving this recommendation to this Board of Education. And I know that Dr. Vansky and teachers and community have been asking for 30 years for true alternative setting for our children, not a dumping ground. You don't need another dumping ground for children. You need a true therapeutic, flexible school like they have in places like Buffalo. So I would aim, because I won't be seeing many of you for a long time, exactly to say that this recommendation would be in writing, and I know that they are supported by your union, and I will say that unless you work together to solve this problem, and when I say to you that there is $80 million in this organization to give our students more service or support, I will leave that in writing. I will leave that in writing as well. And I wish you well, and I know that with your leadership, you will succeed because we do have extraordinary teachers and students. And we've been asking for our family for help. We cannot forget the families and the community as part of this equation. And at the end, the solution is not whether we suspend the kid. I can and go conscientious. A child with serious mental health need that needs a day treatment therapeutic setting, say that the solution is to send him home. That is not the ethical action on educator. So I will tell you that my hope is that this board, and I know with the new leaders, with the new superintendent, this is a recommendation that I will be advancing, and I will believe in the resources earmark, again, this would be recommendation, for this district to at least to create, to establish two school. One in which is for severe children, like for example, you talking about challenging? I was the school number 16 last year, and there was a kid that was supposed to be in day treatment. And some of you may remember that day, and I used all my counseling skill, and I devoted about 45 minutes to an hour. And unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't make the right recommendation for that kid, fortunately. But we cannot force a day treatment facility to affect some of our kid. And sometimes there are space problem. So therefore, the district need to own this challenge, and to create a school for those kids that unfortunately has mental health need that I well found it. Number two, Old City High was created for about 800 students that we have today that I overage and on the credit. And we do have capacity there to put some of those students, and Mrs. Bobar is working very hard with his, with her staff and her colleagues to put together at least a student that need to be placed as soon as possible in another setting such as Old City High. And again, I repeat, we have 800 students right now that approximately could be benefiting from specialized placement. And it is unfortunately. However, I would tell you that every year, Edison, there's hope. When I came here with Northeast or West, some of you might have been there, actually, President White, you and I were there. That is a school that is making progress because we stepping and put the support and put a lot of people to work, and we did, I achieving some good results. And for Edison, I would say, because I heard a lot about that, there's hope, there's resources, and there's talent in this district that if we put politics aside, whether I'm going to be here for a day or for three years, let's move forward so that we can give these students the support that they need, and our teachers, and disciplining with dignity is part of this equation too. And my hope is that we can, in two years or less, we could have at least this alternative setting that could address the long-term need to our students, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vargas. We're going to take a, we're going to take a three-minute recess.
So you will have the money to create those schools?
Yeah. That...
I will leave it in writing for your recommendation book. Before you can let the people know that I said it was a system. And we have created, but actually, we're in the system itself.
Where do I need to sign?
And you know, my reason for listening as well.
Where do you go to school?
Because people, all they are doing is completely just say something, and you know that breaks my heart. And I hope you not. I know you're the police. Listen, you know, I do know, I'm up to it.
I was wondering, I have to leave, but I was trying to get through. I was trying to figure out what's going on. I was thinking, I was, I am actually working, not organizing, but we try to get, I'm really happy to be back to the, I'm trying to, I'm not really, I'm still, um, different, you know, trying, you know, to take those kind of things, you know, students and leaders and stuff like that. So I was wondering, is like this kind of, is there something else?
Send us an email. Remind me of this conversation. Okay, where, you can go to the board and send us an email to give us more information about it. Okay? All right. Tell me your name again, though?
Sarah Johnson.
Okay.
Hey, Will. Hey, Will. Hi, how are you?
President White is going to visit.
Hi, how are you? No, no, no worries, no worries. Hi, how are you? Hi. Good, good. So you work for the district?
Yes, sir. That we can not even put a district that has so many computer. And I'm telling you, I be President White, you could discipline me, but it's political. But it is political, but it's a type-one problem. It's like, it's like you needing water. I have the water. Why wouldn't I give it to you? Why, why is that? Because I can check in and let take. I, you know, I can talk about, but I'm telling you that if you stay in the, is the reason.
Okay, all right. Thank you, nice to meet you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, we're going to get started. He was telling you, the mic was on.
Oh, you. All right. That's what my president said.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm glad I was there.
Oh, so you just, I'm just joking, I'm just joking. All right. I kind of thought the room might clear out a bit, give folks an opportunity to get home, but we do have a lot of business to attend to, so let's get started. Let's begin with our EPO report. Mr. Nelms?
Might show them my present.
Good evening, Commissioners and community. I'm here to give a brief update on the status of the EPO as of November 19, 2015. We are underway. I know it's just we are 12 weeks into school, but we're starting to think about next year and the recruitment of students who are entering grades six, seven, and eventually nine. We have begun the process by identifying the six feeder schools, potential feeder schools to East. We don't have a feeder school process right now, but we're trying to find all the students who are walkers in schools one, 23, 25, 28, 33, 46, and 52. Those walkers, we hope to aggressively recruit so that we can create a community school atmosphere at East. And the involvement of these schools and their staff is integral in that process. And so we want to thank those principals for meeting with us to discuss the potential partnerships between these community schools and East. We had an event on October 28th, which was attended pretty well, but we have another one on December 3rd that we hope to double the amount of parents and community members who attended. We did phone calls, we did home visits, and the next step after December 3rd is to visit schools individually to talk about East and its programs, and to provide more information to parents in that process. There's a lot of good things going on at East, and this slide indicates some of the good news. We have five students recognized by RTS for their good behavior on school buses, and how they're supporting some of the students there and making positive choices. Also, we continue to aggressively engage our students and academics, but in this slide, we talk about the athletics. You see there are 233 students who will be, who were requalified for winter sports as opposed to 176 last year. So we're getting into the classrooms, we're getting into family groups, and trying to encourage students to try some of our new sports, so we can expand some of those offerings. We know that through sports, art, music, and good academic experiences, students are more likely to come to school. And so we're trying to hit all those fronts aggressively upfront to create a new culture. We also, tonight, actually, we have a post-high school options event. It's well-attended. I got a bunch of texts and emails when I was sitting in the audience. We have a college prep center going over college application process. As someone who has a freshman in college now, that could be a very daunting and confusing process. Center for Youth, we're there to talk about employment options, one of our partners, University of Rochester, focused on transitioning students with disabilities beyond high school. And there are ample opportunities for question and answer around life beyond East. In addition, we began the process of summer with engaging many of our parents. We had over half of our parents attended orientation. And on our open house, which was in early September, a parent approached me and said that she was confused about the college process and wanted more information in one location. So we created the Senior Toolkit, expanded upon some documents that are in other locations. I have one in front of each of the commissioners that allows parents to look at graduation requirements, tips for leaving high school and preparing as sophomores and juniors and seniors. We also have information there as relates to the NCAA requirements, with a lot of students who have aspirations of becoming a college athlete, student athlete, and so making sure they understand the importance of good grades and good SAT scores become paramount. So I left that with you. Again, just an opportunity to reengage our parents, and I was proud that a parent asked for this, and that the team of teachers and parents and administrators immediately got on top of this task and had this done within a month. And I thank University of Rochester for helping do the graphics and to organize some of the language there. But this came right from a parent. It's not something that was on our radar. It wasn't something that we were considering, and I would encourage parents to continue to push our thinking so we can respond accordingly. This week, we had a number of our students, our students who are the top 10%, met for breakfast with their parents and to celebrate their academic success. The next step in this process is to have these scholars engage our students in grades six and seven, so we again continue this culture of academic excellence. And I do acknowledge two of our students, Sean Harkes. And on our open house, which was in early September, a parent approached me and said that she was confused about the college process and wanted more information in one location. So we created the Senior Toolkit, expanded upon some documents that are in other locations. I have one in front of each of the Commissioners that allows parents to look at graduation requirements, tips for leaving high school and preparing as sophomores and juniors and seniors. We also have information there as relates to the NCAA requirements, with a lot of students who have aspirations of becoming a college athlete, student athlete, and so making sure they understand the importance of good grades and good SAT scores become paramount. And so I left that with you. Again, just an opportunity to reengage our parents, and I was proud that a parent asked for this and that the team of teachers and parents and administrators immediately got on top of this task and had this done within a month. And I thank University of Rochester for helping do the graphics and to organize some of the language there. But this came right from a parent. It's not something that was on our radar. It wasn't something that we were considering, and I would encourage parents to continue to push our thinking so we can respond accordingly. This week, we had a number of our students, our students who are in the top 10%, met for breakfast with their parents and to celebrate their academic success. The next step in this process is to have these scholars engage our students in grades six and seven, so we again continue this culture of academic excellence. And I do acknowledge two of our students, Sean Harkness and Van Damme, who are salutatorians, valedictorians for the upcoming year based on their GPA. It was a very proud moment. We hope to double that, the number of students next year, who will be honored in this celebration. But to have these seniors get together with their parents and to celebrate their success was incredible. There was one young lady whose mom was in tears, and she said, "My daughter works 38 hours a week. She has another job that she does on occasion, and to maintain a GPA of 3.8 was incredible." And so I think about those students and what they have to go through as young adults and their work and determination. It was a special moment for all of us at East to see these students. And these are students that we had for years. And so this is a testament to the work of those educators who came far before the U of R.
Dr. Nelms, does the 210 scholars represent your potential cohort of graduates?
Yeah, that's the potential cohort. So one of the pieces of data, Commissioner White, that we have, we continue to clarify is are the graduates based on credits versus the graduates based on cohort? And that's something that has been a bit muddy at East in the past, and I'm not saying that's a district-wide issue, but at East I can speak that those numbers have been used interchangeably. And so what you'll see, starting next month with the board reports, is we're gonna, even for attendance, we're gonna report out the number of kids who are 10th graders by cohort and 10th graders by credits, because we have to track that differently so we can give the school board and the University of Rochester an accurate depiction of our graduation rates within four years, five years, and six years.
But all the state cares about is the cohort.
Exactly. Right, exactly. And I think that in the past, we have mixed those numbers too often and perhaps given an inflated number to the community, the East community. We gotta make sure that that's cleaned up and we can be as accurate as possible until the state gives us our numbers, which are typically the next year. But we want to make sure that process is clean so we can account for our performance as part of the EPO. From our staff, they have screamed and yelled at us since July about improved communication. I heard Dr. Vargas mention that this evening as well. And so we've tried to implement a few things to improve that. There's a lot of work to be done at East. I don't want to claim victory, but we have a series of conversations with staff to have just coffee and donuts and talk about some of the issues and some successes at East. We have, we're using different technologies to not have to force staff to come together to have critical conversations. We continue to have a host of surveys, and the thing that I want to continue to push at these board meetings is the Let's Talk app. It allows, it's an app that's on your phone, and anyone in the community, students, staff, parents can email us anonymously or by name, and it goes right to my phone. And so I can track not just my response time, but response time of my administrators. And so, you know, it's one thing to demand that we respond in 48 hours, another thing to be able to say, "You're averaging two and a half days, that's too long, you gotta respond more quickly." So it's an app that allows us to track response time, it allows us to track the issues that are coming in. I see all the, I have access to all the input that comes to us daily. And I can say that there are a number of students who are using this, staff are using it, and it's been, it's a really good resource and it's not that expensive. So I know that Willie Robinson was asking questions about it, to use it as a possible tool for parent engagement. It's just something that was brought to my attention at a conference recently, and it's been a great resource for East. So for our data, this is a few data points that I want to go through. The first would be the attendance by grade level. I know there's a lot, it's a very small graphic, but just to overall, our attendance for grades six and seven remain high. We see a slight dip in eighth grade. Some of that is due to suspensions. Again, I'll speak about discipline in a second. And you'll see the data for grades 10, 11, and 12 being in the 80% range, 80 to 85% range. I want to pull that out and see what the, how that attendance looks by cohort as compared to credit attainment, because I think those numbers will look different if we do it that way. Student behavior, just comparing the incidents from October last year to this year. I just want to be clear with the community and Community Commissioners, because we see the light purple on the bottom, the lower number, compared to the dark purple, doesn't mean that there are incidents happening in between. All right, so the incidents that are reported here are those that result in some type of discipline. We are using restorative practice to intervene in many situations, and I don't want to mislead the community or mislead the board around these incidents. Well, I will also say that there were additional incidents last year with the dark purple that also didn't show up on this chart. So if you're comparing apples to apples, this chart makes sense, but I don't want to give the impression that, you know, kids are acting like angels all day. We still have our issues. We have a lot of issues in eighth grade, we have some issues in ninth. But for the most part, grades six, seven, 11, and 12 are right where they should be, and we've retooled and revamped our administrative coverage to support grades eight and nine, because that's where our issues are. And those are issues that we predicted based on the age of the students and their past academic performance and behavioral performance. Just quickly, this is the lower school data to give you a little bit more analysis of how that's working. You'll see in grade eight where some of those suspensions are, become problematic, lower school. And then the next slide explains the upper school data, which again shows some of the comparative data from the previous year to this one. So we continue to push ourselves at East. Again, I want to just reiterate, we have phenomenal teaching staff, phenomenal administrative team, and some committed students. We do have some students who are making some poor choices, and we are aggressively trying to support them. And I think to Dr. Vargas's point, there are many students who require some additional therapeutic support. We're fortunate to have the University of Rochester Medical Center there to provide that support on-site, but, you know, the issues are vast, you know? They say the struggle is real. And we are continuing to service our students the best way possible. We're looking to partner with the RCSD to continue those supports for students. Thank you.
Mr. President, questions? Commissioner Cott?
Yes, three things. Number one, you spoke very fast. Tell me again the open house date.
The open house date is December 3rd, I believe.
That's a...
December 3rd, yes.
That's a Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay, I'll have my son there.
All right, good.
Number two. Unless you're gonna give out magnifying glasses? This page does not work. I mean, we have extra pages. I hope this is, I hope this is a draft.
This is my quick print for you tonight. You can add a higher copy of it.
So my feedback, that needs two pages, because if it's worth, if it's worth reading, it's worth being able to see it.
Which page are you printing?
That's number 14. Now, I understand not a lot of people are ever gonna be turning to the NCAA Division One sliding scale.
Right.
But if it's worth printing, it's worth making sure it's, can be read.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And the last thing. I wonder if you could help me, educate me, or maybe this is an action item we take up after the meeting, but when a student receives working papers, aren't they limited in terms of the number of hours that they can work? And if, and if an employer is hiring a student, they know to be a student for more than those number of hours. I'm reacting to your example of the 38-hour work week for a student. Assuming that they're under the age of 18, they're working on working papers.
That's a great question. That's the same question I asked after that student revealed that.
And I totally get that there are families that need their kids to be working, or they wouldn't have the money for their own clothes and what have you. They're contributing to the larger family income, but at the same time, there are rules, and the rules have reasons for existing, like making sure kids can put study time in.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope?
I just want, if I might, Mr. President, just to make an observation. When we proposed this model, one of the things that we were looking, Dr. Nung, is for learning from you. And my hope is that, we will put it in my cabinet meeting before I leave, what have we learned so far? And I just look at the information here that you're talking about, like for the senior, that's, I don't know if it would do it, but we will be looking at best practice. One of your best practices, for example, that I heard so far, that I think is gonna make a big difference in there, is students, families, and staff understanding the graduation requirement. And what is the difference between a kid that started, that has seven credit, but is in 12th grade? Well, that kid's not gonna make his cohort, basically. What, and I said this because it sounds simple, but it has to be embedded in the culture. And also, there had to be a cultural accountability, because come on, a lot of this thing, I, information, as you know, because you and I used to be, worked together at Acadia. I mean, if I failed not to know the graduation requirement for a particular child, you'd think I wouldn't last long at Acadia? So this is something that I think we need to shift the culture and people taking responsibility for knowing certain things. And I look forward to having a conversation with you, because so far, I see so much stuff that I think that we can begin to reinforce in the district that I, it would be, I use this strong word, would be a tragedy if we don't learn from what's going on at East, including what you're just talking about, celebrating the student work and achievement, and it has to be visible. And it just, I just can't wait to see the result. And I think that you are very wise to say that the results are not going to be immediate. But however, I had no doubt that your graduation rate next year would be significantly better than this year because of the change in practice there.
I might not make it that promise yet.
I know. I'm making that on your behalf, so. And thank you for alerting me that I shouldn't have my microphone when I have a hidden discussion with a teacher. So thank you.
But I just want to give, I just, I want to give your staff credit. We have shared, myself with many folks in your cabinet, we share information. The minute that this was created and processed, I shared it with Christiana and Adele, and so we have, they gave feedback, and it's been, it's been a pretty fluid process with sharing of information. So I wanted to say that and say that we've done that back and forth over the course of the year, so.
You know, I had mentioned that very same concern at our leadership meeting. I'm not sure if you would want to meet with Senator Flanagan when I had mentioned that, but you're absolutely right, that has to be part of this effort to learn from each other. And by the way, Sean has indicated to me that his staff has had the benefit of the experience of the district, so it's, it works both ways. But clearly, we would be making a huge mistake if we didn't understand that this was a potential incubator for best practices. And I think, and one of the things that I mentioned to the folks at leadership was that, and to our able clerk, that we ought to be having one of our leadership meetings at East High School pretty soon, our 7:30 meetings. And at those meetings, we ought to make sure that the superintendent and his staff are at those meetings as well, so that we all... You know, one reporter said to me today, she said, "Well, you know, they're doing some great stuff over there at the U of R and East, and what's the district's relationship to that?" And I said, "Well, they are the district."
Absolutely.
I think there are some out there that think you're some kind of charter school or some private school, and I said to them, "No, that's the district's school." So again, I think Dr. Vargas is right, we have to really encourage that kind of collaboration and communication across the district.
Excuse me, if I might, a long lesson learned. One of the challenges that we had at East was to get a teacher to share lesson planning.
Yeah.
And are you making any progress or anything that you can share about lesson planning and discussing the student work?
So part of the EPO, lesson planning, and we provide a template, and every teacher has a poster lesson plans on a shared point, on a shared site, so that special education teachers can have access to the lesson plans ahead of time, colleagues within the same content area would have access to those lesson plans. And then we do the curriculum plan, kind of a lesson plan without a ton of details. That goes on our website for the community to see if they choose. But the lesson plans within the building are shared. We get feedback on those lesson plans. We also monitor them for learning targets, the purpose of the work, so that students can identify the purpose of work for the day. So lesson planning has been, I mean, it's been something that has been, it's a shift, but I think the teachers are founded to be useful in that they are able to collaborate and be knowledgeable of what's to come in those lessons, as well as what's gonna happen next. In fact, I was, I observed the social studies classroom today. I try to get into at least four classrooms a day and try to do at least five observations formal a week, that's my plan, my goal. And I was in one today, and it was a great opportunity to co-plan with a teacher and to sit with assistant principal, who's new, who's a new administrator, and walk them through the observation process to make sure that we're calibrated. And so lesson planning templates allow us to kind of do some pre-planning of those observations by having the materials online and then going to classrooms and giving, not just feedback to the teachers, but giving feedback to the administrators who are responsible for observing teachers.
Well, thank you. I hope that in the district, in my observation, and this is part of the inflexibility and the culture that I'm talking about in the district, as you know, I know sharing anything new with you, that have been a struggle for us even to get that in place. And I know that you know this, because you and I had an incredible discussion, like, can you imagine? That's about 30 or 40 years' practice of teachers sharing lesson planning. And now that we have the technology, is this the old model that you have at East? And I hope that the district can, principle, because they need to be, everybody need to own this work. Can't be just the school board, the superintendent, say, "We need to have lesson planning." Those are good professional practices. And I want to, I know that Beverly Borelmore had taken some heavy-duty criticism for trying to emulate that practice. So even when we're trying to implement those good practices, we do experience some resistance, but my hope is that East can teach us that this can be done and no one has to, you know, that those are just good practices that we have to put in place. So thank you, and sorry that I took too much.
No, no, that's fine. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick one, not to Sean, but to Dr. Vargas. I'll ask my question to Sean when we get to the, or talk about it when I get to the resolutions. But I think, help me to understand, Dr. Vargas, you mean to tell me we have teachers in this district that don't share their lesson plan, and we just allow that to go? I don't get that.
I'm gonna let Mr. Nung to answer it.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
If we've got teachers that don't, I heard tonight how we, all of this community, I know they were lying, but that's what we heard tonight. You, we've got teachers in this district that don't share their lesson, and there's, and they're not held accountable for that? See, those are the teachers that don't need to be in this district, because we're all supposed to be working together.
Most of this is a result of the expectation in this district have been so low for so long.
That's crazy.
Let me just put it this way, Mr. Nung tonight, Dr. Nung, I'm sorry. We sometimes have share frustration about, for example, how even non-tenure teachers, when you, you cannot sit, but again, if the principal or us don't have that kind of expectation, what I see at East is that you have a very strong set of expectation about how you're teaching and learning. I mean, when you and I, for example, when you were here, you would say to me, you would say, "Mr. Vargas, I cannot in good conscience recommend this person for tenure." And, you know, and I brought some of those issues to the school board, so we cannot say that this is new here. However, it was very difficult, because we even get resistant in some cases, and you hear sometimes about certain thing. And I just want to leave it at that, that for, your question is so great, but the expectation of the district has to be more rigorous around the student work and supporting teacher too, because you can't just say, "Do it." I mean, you, if you have an organization where a teacher for 15 years, for example, I remember meeting with the East administration under a teacher, and I asked the question, "How often in the past five years have you been asked for lesson planning?" And I remember three years ago, they told me, "This is the first time that we've been asked." "Why are you being asked?" "Oh, because we have a new APR." That should not be forcing us. This is something that we should create a culture in our organization that anyone who gets hired here, like at East, right? And that is very clear from the day that you hire me, right? That that's how businesses, the expectation at East is very clear. So it is a great question, and it's something that I believe that because of East... So it is a great question, and it's something that I believe that because of East and because of the work that we are beginning to do, for example, Mrs. Barbaris is working on this whole notion of expectation for people knowing the metric, you know, around lesson planning.
Well, let me just say, and I'll stop at this point, there's nowhere where we should have teachers or whomever is resisting what we're trying to do on behalf of our kids. If that's the case, we should be looking at exit strategy for those people, because this is supposed to be about children. And it really is concerning me, and that's why I argue, we don't need more money, we don't know, we don't know what we need, because we have people around here who are selfish and are doing things on their own and not putting the children first. Or you have people and leaders who are afraid, they're afraid of the unions. Well, you're gonna get vilified, you may as well just deal with it and do what's best for children. And that's a real concern to me.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Nelms? There being no further questions or comments, thank you, Dr. Nelms, we appreciate it. There are some issues on the agenda resolution, so I know you're going to stick around. Dr. Vargas?
Yeah, thank you. I just would like to go over with you, because this is something that is a key goal for us, addressing our summer learning loss, and it's part of, in my view, addressing some of the greatest challenges that this district have, which you're seeing in the data, not just at East, but also the entire district, where we have so many children that when they enter ninth grade, are behind in reading and math in particular. And we also have too many of them that when they enter ninth grade, it used to be the practice that most, a lot of our students at age 16 were entering ninth grade. And part of that was the challenge of that our children needed more opportunity than children elsewhere, and the summertime is one of the most challenging times for children in poverty. And there are those, that I just want to be clear, that want to argue with them. And that's something that I will tell you, that in 1909, we know about the phenomenon of the summer learning loss. So our goal is to prevent the summer learning loss by providing high-quality summer learning program for our students. As you can see in this page, this is grounded in research, this is not something that we are making up here. This is something that I urge you to, and you see some of the literature being cited here, but we also know about common sense, that if a child is spending their summer in Clifford Avenue, we have much to do, and our principal, our teachers, and everyone know that, that we lose significant number of students during this summer. And it is very difficult to keep children on track unless we address the summer learning loss. So we, in 2015, had a 40 district partner that were helping us deliver high-quality summer learning program. And last year, we were serving more than one-third of our students, approximately 40% took advantage of our summer learning. We had a 25% increase over the prior year. And we saw more growth at the elementary enrichment recovery programs and the pre-K ramp out, because we also are measuring the result. We're not just providing the program, but we want to know, is it having an impact? And you will see in the next few minutes that indeed it having significant impact. More than 1,000 students were served by community partner, which by the way, Rochester could be very proud, because this is one of the areas that our partners have contributed to our ability to provide more support to our children during the summer. I thank you, the Board of Education, for providing Ja for 140 students, because we do know that also teenagers that are engaged in a summer employment program, they tend to stay out of trouble. And not only that, to be more engaged, and when they come back to school in September, they are much, much ready. And also, we were meeting a real need around poverty. When a child bring, and the average was close to $2,000, that for some kid in the family or income of $20,000, that's a 10% increase on the income level of the household. Why? Because we do know that children coming from poverty, when they work, guess where the money goes? It's to the families and to contribute. So that's something that you will see me advancing as a recommendation for next year for us to do more. You heard me saying that, yes, we need more mental health and more counseling, more social worker, but we also need more opportunity for our kids in other area. Academic achievement, we know that we saw our result in reading and math for grade one through eight. We also have evidence that we saw positive result, and also we did utilize local assessment. And attendance as well, we did look on that, and we also did look at our online credit recovery program and tends to result. So again, 12,000 students plus took advantage of our summer learning program. And our summer learning loss was reducing math, 63% for students in grade one, one through three, maintain or improve utilizing the NWEA math score. Again, the NWEA is a formative assessment that the district used to see if children are staying on track in the area of reading and math. For reading, some programs, they show some progress. However, we didn't see the same improvement that we saw in math, and this is congruent with the founding that the Rand Corporation is doing through the Wallace Foundation. And there are specific recommendations that you will see that we have. We did, and this is something that we should be very proud, when we came here, and I want to credit Perry and Jerry for this work, because she brought the incredible discipline through program management and other, to make sure that we met this target. We used to have less, very small number of children in special education who needed the most, were participating in our summer program. And 22% of our students with disability, that exceed our average, which is around 18%. Again, the same thing for English language learner. And I want to thanks Commissioner Campus, because this is something that she advocated significantly for equal opportunity for that population. And in that group, not only we were working with the students, but Ray and all that, they put a program together for professional development for our English language learners' teachers. And that's something, again, that the Commissioner, Education Commissioner, Elliot went to a classroom, and she gave us some hard mark, and she was encouraged. And those are the type of thing that we need to do more. Again, I will, just in the interest of time, I want to jump very quickly to the fact that you need to continue the project managing approach, which is highly a disciplined approach to planning. And we are know where we need to be, but where we have used the program managing approach is paying off, because we are measuring, we are implementing with fidelity, and we are not just talking blah, 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 blah. This is a very thorough design approach that is benefiting the district, and it would be a tragedy if we, because I leave, you went to dump this. And I'm encouraged that President Y say that we don't want to dump some of this strategy, but also it's very important for you to know. Commissioner Evans told me at one point, "You gotta grow this program, our summer learning," because he understand the value, but I say, "We gotta see result." We used to have, for example, program that not a single kid would pass the region's exam, just year to year, we were signing children for the 10-days program, and we didn't see any result. And thousands and thousands of dollars were being expended, but not necessarily yielding any achievement that our population of students so badly needed. Our Wallace Foundation program, as you know, is a very rigorous program. I must confess that in conversation with them, I assure them that the Board of Education and the new leader will maintain the high rigors that they are calling for, for a summer program, and that the Board of Education is extremely supportive. But again, it's not secret that in many circles at Rochester, that I have made this a significant goal for the district through the Board of Education support. And again, the High Horizon Program is another program that we need to make a commitment, because we had to help our children at a very early age. And they are the best, they had the best result. Therefore, when you want to invest or to expand, look for those programs that have rigorous evidence, not necessary hearsay or cheese say or a soft survey, but it has to be about skill set that are necessary to succeed as a student, as a citizen as well. And the High Horizon Program, as I said, that you have a 95% daily attendance. They also have a significant number of the students reading and graduating from grade level, and they are tracking the result, and this is an area that we have a extraordinary partnership. We started four years ago with about 100 students, this year we had 1,000, and the district have made a commitment to pay for any program that start up that is part of High Horizon, and that's $150,000. And I will be advancing some recommendation for you and for Mr. Langard to continue with our program. And also, once again, I do believe that they are doing incredible working in fundraising, because that program, they paid for about 75% of the program. So when they come to us, they don't come for a grant, they come with money and expertise and setting like Eladell Columbia School, setting like Halle, the University of Rochester, San John Fisher, Blackport, this side, Mr. Nung would tell you that branding matter, even telling a kid that you associated with the U of R is important. And they knowing that they could be in a college camp, and by the way, the U of R was one of the first, they need to be commanding to step in to help us with pre-K program. Mr. Nung, make sure that they don't go to East solo then, make sure they, because those kids are going to have a strong foundation. I could tell you that, all you had to do is visit and see what they're working on in the summer. So finding, again, this is extremely important for us to keep in mind, what are the results and what suggestion I did. So we continue to engage our partner to deliver high-quality programs. We do know, for example, that when we align our priorities to the community and our partner, in other words, we have so many people that are saying, "No." And some are not happy with me, because you should not be partner if the person or the group or the organization is not contributing to your priorities. This district need very few priorities and do it well, like summer learning. If we do that well, which I believe we are on that path, you are going to help thousands and thousands of children. It's not enough just to partner for partnering sake. You need to continue to foster and collaborate and work with partner that are helping you achieve your desire, your desired result. We need to continue to work, to look for opportunity to provide more programs and services for more of our students. So you will see a goal for next year, for this summer, I am advancing for 15,000, more than half of our population, and I believe that is doable. But you're gonna have to choose how you spend your money. Anyone can make a proposal, but can you find the money to pay for it? It's not different than when we say, and by the way, in East High School, some people have said to me, "You putting a lot of money there." I say, "Wait until you see the result." Because we used to put significant amount of dollars, and yes, you had a graduation rate around 29% for a special education kid, less than 12%. By the way, Mr. Nung, unless you improve the graduation rate to be that of the district, I want to congratulate Chris, because our graduation rate for special education have improved, not even close to where it need to be, but in a significant way. And I will, one of the thing that paying me tonight is that we known this for years, that we'd be sitting and practicing in the school where the graduation rate for some building is 10%. And if you don't tell me that we need to examine our practices and what we're doing, when you had that kind of outcome, I don't know when are we gonna ask itself the question, "What are we doing?" And through the leadership of Chris and other, we have been able at least to make an attempt to initiate some change. Now, I'm not saying that it's perfect, what we're doing, that it doesn't need improvement, and some of the criticisms that you hear tonight, that we can ignore them, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that also that we are doing the best we can to improve the educational outcome and the life chance for most of our most vulnerable children. You heard one speaker tonight talk about the school-to-prison pipeline. There is no other group than black male and African-American, African-American and Latino male with special education services. That's the population that has the greatest number that sadly end up in prison. So we need to ask the question, and I know that Commissioner Adams and everybody around here is concerned, because the goal of this Rochester City School District is what I call a less, change the social reproduction. We do know that children who gain a good education, like Mr. Nung, and thank you for sharing that in your piece in the paper, that you could be poor, but if you have a good education and you have hope, that we can change the social reproduction so that Mr. Nung or Bohan doesn't have to be in the same path to poverty. But that begin early. That begin with, you know, making sure that teachers, families, community know a school board. That begin with the cabinet every Monday morning to focus on what do our children need to make sure that we change the social reproduction in Rochester. And we know, by the way, that it's not easy, because for the past 30 years, guess what been happening here? This is not the fault of Bohan or Malik Evans, Malik wasn't even born when this problem began. And I'm sorry to call you Malik, but I think this community need to wake up, we're not gonna solve this thing, we are, and this district need to be more flexible and less political and more children-centered. And we need to make sure that we break this social reproduction, and it can be broken. And great institution are about that. And this is what this country used to be, and I am concerned in Rochester, because it, it appears that we are losing hope. And I can't thank every educator enough because that's, you, you, you such powerful in doing the most important work for our society and for the lives of our students. And this school board is powerful. Because you play a role in doing that and I can't thank you enough what you're doing in this summer learning program, because that's part of that equation. You could break that social reproduction through opportunity for our kids and you done that. So we had to look for way to streamline the process, the bureaucratic process, they need to be more flexible in how family can assess some of this program. As I mentioned to you, through our program manager, we have made some great strive on customer service. And I was so pleased to see that ease and hopefully we can learn from you about that customer services. And by customer service, I mean, how do you keep what children needs in mind? Great organization in the 21st century had to concentrate on what do you do? What is your core mission? Well, the core mission of Rochester is to educate our children, to make sure they're reading on grade level, to make sure that they are well-rounded youngster and to be citizen. And I, I will tell you that it can be done. And last but not least, let me conclude by say that all of you should be proud, we got a national award, a competitive national award for being a model in the nation for summer learning. I believe that some of you knew, I had shared that with you, but that credit goes to the community and to the 500, 5,000 plus people educated and that credit goes to you. At the national level, I got a lot of accolade and I say, no, the accolade goes to people and I used to mention because they would ask me, how are you doing it? And I wanted to, again, highlight the work that Patty did. Perry Manjerry, when she came in and I gave her an assignment, I say, summer learning need to be highly organized, it need to be part of our core mission. We are investing millions of dollars and therefore we need to know what the outcomes are. And she introduced the project managing approach and I will tell you that you should be proud because there's been the request for outbook. And by the way, we got the money for organize our summer program to the smart, to the efficiency grant through the Cuomo administration. And that was because of your work that we introduced here as a, as an efficiency and that we were able to show that we were serious about shifting dollars. And you heard me tonight and I will conclude that I will be making recommendation to you before I leave and to Mr. Longgard in how you need to shift about $80 million into the schools through a more efficient and effective way. Some of them would be painful for choice. I'm not saying that it's easy to shift money. Actually, a well-known superintendent told me, Rudy Cruz, to be precise, who have been a chancellor of New York City, Miami, you name it, and he's now a college president in one of the Cooney School, he said, Mr. Ng, and listen to me carefully, that superintendent begin to lose their job when you begin serious about shifting dollars. Because obviously you're going to upset some people and unless you have miracle, he said, there is no way that you can do that well, even if you had the skill set, because there's so much politic in, in shifting dollars. But I know that this Board of Education is serious and I know that over the years you have allowed me to do some shifting. And I hope that we can continue through that path. So that camera, by the way, is in the way to Harvard, we got to make sure that Malik will escape here very soon. And I hope that some of our school would be competing for him not to go to East, but to go to Edison, because we're going to change Edison from what we heard tonight to the school that all of us would be proud to put our children in. So thank you, President White and members of the board for allowing me to give you this report.
Thank you, Dr. Vargas. We now are going to move on to our reports. Our student is not here today. I also have been told that our parent advisory council, Erica Simmons, who is our chair, did submit a written report, so I would direct my colleagues' attention to that report. So that moves us to reports from our colleagues. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, it's very, very late, so I'll just submit my written report. It is on board docs, but I do have two points of personal privilege. The first is I had a chance to visit the Civil Rights Bus and hear the speaker, Lulu.
Griffin.
Griffin. Just, just amazing. I want, it was just a wonderful experience. I've wanted ever since I heard about the Civil Rights Bus to step aboard and it was a real privilege. Thank you for notifying us that it was in town and, and open for business. The second point of privilege I want to call attention to, you know, the, the school, the district puts out notices to parents, a different age group, age levels, grade levels, notifying them that there are opportunities to visit schools. In our case, Alex got a letter for, to visit School of the Arts for their parent orientation for those who might want to apply. The problem was that the flyer had two different dates on the same page. The heading said November 18, but the body said Wednesday, November 19. So it, clearly, we're not, we're not doing everything we can to do to make sure that our communications are clear, unambiguous. You know, we looked at it like, all right, well, Wednesday isn't the 19th, so I guess we better show up on the 18th. But a parent would be fully justified in being furious with us if they showed up on the 19th and no one was there. So, and then the same week, we had an event at School 23 announcing a plan to do a Washington DC field trip and all the planning and fundraising that would be required to go into that for sixth graders. The flyer for that went out through the PTA and it was flawless. It can be done. So just pointing out how we tend to get in our own way sometimes. Thank you. Oh, I'll just, I will announce that our next policy committee meeting is expected to be Thursday, December 10th at 7:00 PM, following the Board Governance meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Evans stepped out.
Excuse, I'm sorry, President. Is that problem have been corrected? The problem that you alluded to about the flyer?
Well, the, the day came and went and.
And it wasn't corrected before, no one caught it?
Nobody caught it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Vice President Elliott.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I am so pleased to report.
All right, ma'am.
Of the community forum on Saturday. It was an exceptional event. We had to add more tables for the event. I want to first of all, thank my board staff, our board staff. I can't thank them enough if I had 10,000 times. Shanae Lee and Mia Johnson. See, she, see, they did an absolutely amazing job on setting up the forum. We did, you know, a lot of, we invited a lot of people from the community. I think every segment of the community was represented, churches, schools, community-based organizations. There was one group that we did not invite that we will, it's a lesson learned, is students. We didn't have students. And so, of course, they're a part of the C, Community Engagement Team, or should be a part of the Community Engagement Team according to the law, and we should have had students there. Let me just, before I get into the content of it, let me just thank the panelists, Commissioner Adams, Deputy Superintendent Christian Artua, School 34 Instructional Coach Kelly Lampin, EPO Project Director Steve Eubing, Community Member Valerie Johnson, Parent Advisory Council President Erica Simmons, School 9 Principal Sharon Jackson, Monroe High School Principal Dr. Vicky Ramos. And we also had, Steve Eubin had to leave early, so Sean Nelms took his place on the panel. And we also had Jennifer Pyle from the Big Five Conference to give us an overview of the, of the receivership and what it means on the state level, what the state is asking. We also had what I thought was very passionate questions from our parents in our community. Oh, and let me just, and let me just also thank some other people that were there. Harry also was in attendance, Harry Kennedy. Abdell Abouvah was also in attendance and I don't know if I'm missing somebody else who happened to be in the audience that was there, but Dr. Dan Longgard stayed all day. So it was a very, very well-attended, Nazareth College was also represented there. So it was a very well-run, a very well-attended event. But it gave parents an opportunity to vet frustrations. And so it showed that parents are really involved, but they have not been given the respect to be involved in the way in which they should be involved. One parent indicated that she's at School 9 every day and nobody there told her about the receivership. Nobody told her about the Community Engagement Team and she had indicated, oh, I'm sorry, Ray was there also. I'm sorry about that, Ray was also in attendance, excuse me. So nobody told her about the receivership and she was willing to participate on the, on the committee. Now, she indicated that, in response to that, the superintendent said, well, we did robo calling and that kind of thing. Well, she's in the school every day. It's an opportunity to develop relationship with her. And, and I think in part, that's why she was angry, because she's in the school and she's very, very involved in her children's education. It went, like I said, it went very, very well. I think I thanked everyone, I thanked board staff. I also wanted, it went longer than it had intended, it was supposed to be until 2:00, but because the, the passion in the group, we allowed it to go longer. Mia had come up to me, I was moderating and then saying to me that we need to be out here at 3:00. I didn't want to stop the flow of the conversation. And so here's what happened at the end, which ended about, what, 2:00, 2:40, somewhere around there. President White, you just be pleased to know that I asked people from, who participated in the workshops to help the maintenance staff to put all the tables, they broke all the tables down. Dr. Nelms took his coat off and put chairs together. I mean, everybody just participated and helped the, I think, where is he at? The parent engagement. Willie Robinson, you know, you had a lot of people who just stayed around and by 3:00 the place was clean. You know, by 3:00, because everybody participated in helping to put all the chairs and tables back, so we didn't have to pay them overtime. They got, they got out of there like they were supposed to. So here's what happened, there was so much momentum from the parents. And one of the things that we talked about and the board staff, and I would debrief it, is how do we keep that momentum going where we can get parent involvement and where parents feel respected? One of the things that we're planning on doing is to hold a couple of more forums. One, somewhere around May, around the school dropout rate. Also, we're going to be talking about in the next Community Intergovernment Relations Committee, having a discussion around the video of the police officer who slammed the student. And so we're going to advertise that and have people to come out for that discussion and hopefully have the supervisor for the SROs, as well as maybe extended invitation to the Chief of Police. Another opportunity for parents to be engaged, but for also parents to understand exactly what that process looks like in the city school district. So I'm looking forward to that kind of, that conversation. That will be at the December 1st meeting and we'll get more information out there about that. And then I also, just let me get back to the forum. I want to thank the camera people, really appreciate all that they did. They were absolutely awesome and I appreciate that. You can also find the, the forum on our website if you want to have an opportunity to, to take a look at that. And I also think it's on YouTube as well. So it's out there in, in the world, in the cloud, if you will, if you want to have an opportunity to view that. So the next meeting is December 1st and it's at 6:45. Is that the time of the meeting?
I believe it is. When audit is finished.
Okay, I'll have to talk about that. I may want to do it on another date. I'll, we'll talk about that, because 6:45 may be too late for parents to come out. Yeah, so we'll talk about that. But we will get in touch with people about the, the time of that. And then lastly, I wanted to, and President White, you may also be talking about this, the seminar that was on Monday, I believe, or it was last, last Monday, that the Board of Regis hosted on the education of black boys. And one of the things I want to point out, in the session that I was in, that was facilitated by a gentleman by the name of, you know him, Glenn Singleton, who wrote the book Conversations of Race, who indicated, you know, in this community, we always want to say poverty is the issue, why we can't educate our children, black children. Well, one of the things that he says is that we have to take the economy out of it, because middle-class blacks are not doing, perform lower than whites as well, as well as, although he didn't say this, but if you read Dr. Janice Hell's work, she'll also tell you that even upper-middle-class students don't fare as well as white students. So he is suggesting that we take the economy out of it because it's not about poverty, all right? Because middle-class families got money, upper-middle-class families got money and they're still not performing as well, as well. So that's what he suggested. I wanted to make sure that I put that on the table, that it's not about the economy, although wherever you go in Rochester, they want to, they want to associate a lack of education with poverty and that's just not the, that's just not the truth. And I hope we get around that so that we clearly can focus on the education of our kids. And so with that said, that concludes my report.
All right, let's backtrack. Commissioner Evans.
I'll be reading my report. Good morning. Actually, I'll probably be saying good morning in a couple of minutes. We had a great presentation from the Early Childhood Department and Robin Hooper. Mr. President, you were there. We got a specific update on the RPPP program, which we will continue to monitor and looking forward to another report in February. My full report will be posted on board, board docs. We also reviewed a resolution which proposed agreements for community-based providers, that's in your packet, that's Resolution Number 357. We're very happy about that. That's, that's going to allow us to continue to obviously expand our program and also will benefit a lot of our community providers, which do provide great services in pre-K. Let me just skip down here to the resolutions that were forwarded to the ESA Committee for further discussion. McKay, POC Associates, Daniel Roller, Janice Barclay, DBA, BKL Associates, those are before you. We didn't take a vote one way or the other, which way we wanted to go, go with that. There was a lot of spirited discussion around these resolutions. So we can discuss those under, under the resolution section of, of our agenda, Mr. President. And we initially were going to discuss the SRO contract because we thought that, because CIGR was having the receivership meeting, that the. CIGR was having the receivership meeting, that the contract was going to be, needed to be reviewed by some committee, so we were going to do it in ESA. But it will now be reviewed in the CIGR committee meeting in December. Our next meeting is scheduled on December 8th. That may change, because there is a special meeting, and I believe there's also a CIGR meeting. Is there a CIGR meeting?
Well, we are, I see December 1st, and then I was thinking about the 15th, and maybe those were the dates scheduled because of the special meeting.
Yeah, so we'll have to see what we do. I understand a special meeting shouldn't be too long. If the special meeting is not going to be too long, then we may do it on the 8th. Otherwise, we'll look at changing it, because we do have a couple of important topics to discuss, one of which being placement, the placement department. So we want to get an update on that. So stay tuned to the next meeting, maybe the 8th, but maybe after that. Although if it's the 8th, everyone will be here, so everyone can participate in it. So that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to thank you and Commissioner Evans for also being in attendance at the receivership.
Yeah, it was a great event. Great event.
Excellent event. Commissioner Campos?
Yep. Governance, we met on November 12th, and it was focused on the orientation of our new school board member, and she was actually in attendance, so that worked out really well. So just to be brief, key things that we're going to be focusing on are two nights of meeting with administration, better understand all the key initiatives, what's going on with the district, the focus, et cetera, et cetera. As well as, some of the things that we added was for them, for her to be able to meet via Skype the key bodies, such as New York State School Boards Association with Tim Kremer, as well as Georgia from Big Five, and Monroe County School Boards Association. So those will be scheduled for her, as well as school liaison. We talked about that, and she said that she would reach out if there were any schools that she really would, that she's passionate about. And the last thing, there was one other, as well as meeting with board staff, to be able to talk about key, to review key pertinent policies, as well as their role. So that is going to be the, that's going to be her onboarding process. She was happy with it. And if there's any suggestions in the meantime, please feel free to let me know. One of the recommendations is to be able to, in looking at this, we don't have a formal onboarding process, and it's, I'm sure that we could build on this foundation and make it stronger. So on that note, we will have, our next meeting will be a committee of the whole to discuss the superintendent's search process, and this is going to be on December 3rd at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report. We also had wellness, and I'm happy to announce that Mary's going to be taking over that committee, the Wellness Committee. And we had Bev was in attendance, as well as Ray, because we were looking at, how can we make sure that there is an accountability loop, as well as Carlos and Audrey do a good job of supporting the staff? There's some key things. How can we help and work together to make sure that recess is happening, because it's not happening in many schools, as well as the health education? So the health education's going to be a heavy lift, and we will be talking about that in our December meeting, and we're looking to schedule that right now. So that officially concludes my report.
All right. Commissioner Adams?
The Audit Committee did not meet in November. We are scheduled for December 1st at 5:45. I think it will, it actually will be a brief meeting, I believe, so if you do want to consider that for your CIGR meeting afterwards, I think it would be fine. We will be reviewing the draft CAFER, and all board members are invited to attend.
Oh, that's going to be long. That's going to be long. That may not work.
Well, actually, I should mention that questions were due, so hopefully, if there were questions, I'm anticipating that it'll be straightforward, based on the lack of questions that have been submitted. Unless there are some that have been submitted to the Auditor General that I'm not aware of, have people's, yeah?
I haven't even gotten the draft of the CAFER.
There were materials sent out by the Auditor General. I'll communicate with you afterward. And then, just briefly, I know it's late, I'm not going to go into this in extensive detail, but work with the Community Task Force on School Climate has been really, really productive and intensive. I've sort of shifted my role a little bit, from being a supportive presence, to really digging in on some of the work over the last couple of weeks. And I really appreciate what it takes, and you know, the fact that members of this task force are rotating in and, you know, like, really doing intensive, intensive work for many week periods, and then another section of the work comes along. And it really is a pleasure, although it also is, it's very, very challenging. And we are coming into, you know, I think we got some sense of it, some edge of it. There wasn't, like, necessarily a direct focus in it among the comments from many teachers tonight. But we definitely are in a place where communication is key, clarifying and having accurate information is key. And then, just also, just even when it's frustrating, I'm speaking for myself, coming at the work, even when it's frustrating and you're feeling like, maybe people aren't coming at the issues with as much, you know, generosity or openness, just keeping that partnership approach in mind, and trying to step back and keep coming back around is important. So I think all of us are going to continue to get calls from media. We're going to run into people who are misinformed, and it's important to take the time, and I appreciate being part of a collaborative effort.
Good. Any questions for Commissioner Adams?
I'll try to be brief as well.
You've got four or five pages.
Like Vice President Elliott, I want to thank communications staff, not necessarily for the forum on receivership. But you know, quite often, we miss the folks that allow us to communicate with the rest of the folks out there. So I just want to thank you, gentlemen, and look at this guy over here, he's not even paying any attention to me.
Hey, cameraman.
Cameraman.
You.
Sir, on behalf of the board, I'm saying thank you. Thank you, sir. You know, we often don't think about the folks that are behind the camera, and we do appreciate the work that you do, because we want to communicate to the community what we're doing, and you allow us to do that, so thank you. The other thing I wanted to say is, in this whole East High School thing, I personally am going to go to East High School tomorrow morning. I mean Edison, I'm sorry. I'm going to go to Edison tomorrow morning and just walk around and say hello. That's what they asked us to do, at least four or five speakers asked to do that. Not everybody's schedule allows them to do that, so I want you all to know, I am available to do that, so the board can keep that commitment. And you know, the real work, the boots on the ground, is done by the folks in central office. And if I see anything, or recognize anything, or have any suggestions, I will share that with your staff. And if anybody happens to be there, I'll be there with you. So I should note, there are some things that are happening at Edison. I did not get into any detail about those things. I think there's a time and place for everything, but my suggestion to the administration would be that you somehow communicate, I don't know, through a mass email, or the things that have taken place. For example, I mean, they have three additional SSOs. They have an AP there who is focused almost exclusively on safety and school climate, who, and in fact, has some expertise in that area. So I think that we ought to communicate to our staff, those that express concerns, that things are being done, and actually, they were being done in advance of tonight's meeting, so I think it's important to communicate that. I don't, I'm not that person to provide that communication, but I want to emphasize to you, Dr. Vargas, and your team, that I think somehow, we ought to be responsive, and we ought to look at tonight's event as an opportunity to say to our staff, whether we believe everything that was said tonight, whether we agree with it or not, that we're listening. Because as I always say, good leadership begins with listening. In terms of, you know, the things that are happening in this community, the receivership forum, Vice President Elliott, it was more than exceptional. It was a positive event for this entire district. People were allowed to vent, but not just that, people got information. A lot of folks didn't even know what was going on, and that's not anybody's fault. But it's good that we understand that there are all kinds of ways in which people communicate, and not everybody receives communications effectively through robo-calls. You know, I and my wife have occasion have hung up the phone on the robo-calls, right? So the forum was a way for people to hear from the people who, I mean, you had every, I think, every person principal who was charged with the receivership school was there at the forum, sharing their own distinct insights. I thought that was very powerful and very helpful. In terms of the, there's good news. You know me, I always like to focus on the good news, and it's good to see, I see Sean, Dr. Nelms talks about good news in his report, Dr. Vargas and Chip for quite a while have been talking about good news. We do need to focus on that, and today was a tough day, I think, for most of us tonight, to hear some of the grievances and complaints. But I always tell folks, turn back to the good news, because that's the fuel that allows you to provide service to those folks who have all that bad news. And so, there's a lot of good news in this district. I mean, let's not forget, not to embarrass anybody at East, but when is the last time this district got a front-page cover story with a huge photograph saying something almost entirely positive about this district? It's been a long time, folks, and that is good news, because we're not going to make it through this unless we constantly refuel ourselves with the positive things that we are doing. And so positive, I don't mind talking about this. The mayor, the mayor is running commercials. The first third of it is based on East High School. Now, we kind of chuckle about that, but that's actually something that is quite a compliment. This is a mayor who's done quite a bit on her own, but she felt that that news was so good, that it's about a third of her commercial. That's our district. Somebody even said to me, they said, well, what's the district got to do with what the U of R is doing? I said, no, that's our district. That's not a charter school. That's not a private school. The EPO is our superintendent, right? So let's not get so overwhelmed with the bad news that we forget what we need to encourage us. Another good thing that happened, our students and our staff at School Without Walls was invited to a White House summit on next-generation technology. They were direct participants in this process. The White House called us up and said, we heard what you're doing with Hillsborough and the Rochester City School District, we want you to help us understand what next-generation technology is about. That was the White House. President Barack Obama calls Rochester to do some work and to show the way. That's good news. The World of Inquiry wins its second Section 5 Class C1 soccer championship. That's good news, man. Those are good students who are being pushed, not only on the field by their coaches, but by their able principal. That is an excellent, awesome school, and we ought to be extremely proud of what they're doing. The Historically Black College Fair, I think they call it the Empower Me Tour, that Councilman McFadden brought to this community, standing room only. You had, I don't know if you guys had a chance to go, but it was absolutely awesome. And by the way, our staff participated in that. Jenga St. Louis from African, African-American Studies Department was a major participant in that. I'm sure Christiane Otua, who supervises many of those people, was involved in that. Willie Robinson, I think like he's gone. Bill Ansboro, I want to thank you, I've already done that once, but I want to repeat my thanks to you and Dr. Vargas. Adam came to me and said, hey, listen, I need, Adam McFadden came to me and said, I need money to feed these kids. These kids got to eat. $10,000. Didn't take long, the email went from Dr. Vargas to Bill Ansboro. Bill Ansboro found the money, because the board certainly didn't have it. And the good news is, they came up the money to feed these kids. And $10,000, what did that get us? One school, Miles College, accepted 32 Rochester City School District students on the spot. Gave out 1.3, let me repeat this, $1.3 million in scholarships to our students. And there's a family connection here. The Vice President of Enrollment for Miles College, Historically Black College, Cerise Peters, my sister. So I'm very, very proud that our family had some connection to the good news happening. I want to just conclude by saying, it would be so easy to get overwhelmed by the things that people write about us, things that people say about us, but we know who we are, and we all know what we do, and we have to remember that. We have to stay focused on that. And we can't let what other folks say about us start to have our, raise our hands and start choking each other, because that'll happen. That'll happen in a hot second. And one of the things I love about this board, and one of the things I love about this district is, we have found a way to stay tight. And for the next two, three, four months, we're going to have to continue to find the glue to do that, because there are folks that want to tear us apart. But there's too much good going on for us to lose focus. So that's my report. Any questions or comments? I know nobody's going to disagree with me, right?
Just that, President White, depending on what time you're going to go, I wouldn't mind, I would like to accompany you over to Edison tomorrow.
Absolutely. Yeah, let's work that out a little bit later on. Other parts of our agenda, we got to do resolutions, of course, the more mundane stuff. I need a motion to consider Resolutions 312 to 323. It's been moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any discussion or comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Vice President Elliott?
Resolution 312, I am concerned, and I won't get into any names, and I've already talked to Sean about this, but I have a serious concern that we would hire the son of the person at the U of R who helped to pull, to put this receivership together. So it seems to me that it's easy to find somebody like him, but it's difficult to find teachers of color to work in this district, and it just, the appearance of it is wrong, in my opinion. In my opinion, it says, well, you know, he did the, the U of R did the EPO, so they can get his son a job. So I'm concerned about that, and I'll be voting no on that. It just does not bode well for the EPO, in my opinion, that we would hire the son of the person that put this EPO together.
I have indicated to Vice President Elliott that any further discussion would require that we go into executive session.
I'm done. I've already made further discussion. I've already said my piece. It's wrong. I think it's wrong for the leadership to make that decision, and I'm done with it.
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolutions 312 to 323? There being no further questions or comments. All those in favor of Resolutions 312 to 323, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
To?
All of them. Is this all the EPO?
I just want to.
Yeah, I may as well say no. To all, these are the EPOs, right?
There's three appointments.
I just say no.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to consideration. Well, I will eventually have to go into executive session on Resolutions 324. Those are our tenure resolutions. Let's skip over that for now, and I get a motion to go into executive session later. How about a motion to discuss Resolutions 325 to 345?
So.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Evans. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions?
President White, I would like to, with respect to 331.
Yep.
Separate out the second from the last line to consider an executive session.
Okay, so there is a motion to separate the last entry of 331?
The second to last.
Second to last, thank you. So that it is determined to be 331A? Is that your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. So let's deal with 331 first. You were going to want to go into executive session on that one?
Yes.
Okay. So let's, we don't need to do that now. I'll do that when we track back, okay? So let's deal with Resolutions 325 through 345, excluding Resolutions 331. Any comments?
Accepting 331A.
331A, thank you very much, Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 325 through 345, accepting Resolutions 331A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Let's move on to Resolutions 346 through 350. I get a motion to advance discussion on those resolutions?
So.
Second.
Then moved by Commissioner Evans and seconded by Commissioner Powell. Been moved by Commissioner Evans and seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding additional pay resolutions 346 to 350?
One quick one, President White.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Regarding 349, within that series of authorizations for additional pay, there's one supporting arts integration leadership, or teachers to lead arts integration, which is something that I support, and we've had repeated really interesting and, and positive presentations in Excellence in Student Achievement Committee over the years. And also, over the years, in the past, we've asked for cost-effectiveness or cost estimates to be provided to expand that opportunity throughout schools, especially elementary schools. And so, I just raise it, I'm, I will support it, despite us not having a fully-developed cost-effectiveness, but I just want to keep the visibility on that, keep the pressure on to, to really look at how much it would cost, and to give us, you know, some cost-effectiveness evaluations. I know that the data's there in terms of the federal study, but in terms of disseminating within our district, it would be great to have really solid information.
Yeah, I, I won't, I won't repeat that. I, I, I thought the same thing when I looked at that particular resolution. What is the latest evaluation that we have on the value of this stuff, right? So, we will stay focused on that, because I think that's important. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolutions 346 through 350? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of the additional pay resolutions, say aye.
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 Any opposition?
No.
To all of them?
To all.
Okay. Let's move on to consideration of Resolutions 351, they're budgetary resolutions, they're budget resolutions. Can I get a motion to discuss those resolutions?
Some.
Been moved by Vice President Elliott and seconded by?
Second.
Who was that? Was that you?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Campos.
How's this being on a budget?
What's that?
I'm just trying to figure out why this is categorized under budget. It doesn't matter.
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 351? There being no further question or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 351, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, let's move on to Resolutions 352 to 353, procurement and supply. A motion to advance those for discussion.
Some.
Been moved by Commissioner Elliott, I mean, Commissioner Powell.
Powell.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions?
Yes, one, I'm going to have to stay on, are we there yet? Am I, no, I don't, we're not there yet, okay.
Not just yet.
There is a, and I can't find it right now, there is a, a resolution for us to purchase milk, am I? So, I want to know, Mrs. Superintendent, somebody can email me this information at a later date. What is our milk bill? How much do we pay for purch, pay for milk?
Okay, we could get that-
All right, thank you.
And how much goes down the drain?
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolutions 352 to 353?
Might just make a comment, because I think it's so important, because this, what you said, this is why it's so important for you to look at enrollment, outnumber of kids that are accurate. For example, you heard me say in one point that we had 1,400 students at Old City High, where only approximately 800 plus show up. So, about 500 kids, we were planning for meal, we were planning transportation, and once you pull that trigger in that contract, and you're planning and you hire, it's very difficult to draw back. And I mentioned that to you, because that's, one of the things that you had to watch, the district had 28,000 students. What that means is that you should be saying, "I would buy the same amount of milk that we were buying," and of course, you had to look for charter school and all the things, but we do have significant number of students that are no show. We have 800 kids that are in the category of, you know, where we do know that might not be showing up. 3,000 kids don't come to school every day, but yet, we have a milk carton for each one of those kids. So, and this is a challenging thing, it's not easy. I'm not saying that when you see this thing, imagine if everyone of our kids show up. Sometime when you have a problem like this, you think that the problem is that we buy too much milk. Well, that's not the problem. The problem is, um, today, and Ibiru was here, Yumam was here, she haven't missed any of this thing, and she was knocking on doors to get kids into, into the classroom. That's why, when I heard Mr. Dr. Nelms talk about attendance, I could predict a lot of our problems started to attend, including the waste, the, and I think we need to communicate that to our community, because I think very often, we, we just say it's learning loss, but also nutrition and health and wellness and all the things.
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolutions 352 to 353? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 352 to 353, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, let's move on to consideration of Resolutions 354 to 356. Is there a motion?
Some.
Been moved by Commissioner Evans, bless you, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding those educational facilities resolutions?
Yeah, Superintendent, I just want to, to be reminded, I think this may have been the second time I've been reminded, but we always get this statement, and I'm always leery of it, the statement that says for some resolutions, after forms of contract and liability insurance has been approved, and I'm always concerned about that. We never get the loop closed, and I guess that's what I'm also going to be asking for, that it is confirmed that these contracts did, in fact, get their insurance and the forms are, are completed. Because I'm always leery about that. I guess I, I'm just suspicious, and I believe in checks and balances, and to leave, because we've got a, we're going to be asked to, well, you, my colleagues are going to be asked to support a resolution that does not include all of the providers for the three-year-old UPK program. And so, I'm always leery about having to vote on something like that when we don't have all of the information. And so, can someone respond to this for me?
Would you like the, the, Mr. Lopez?
Just respond, help me to understand again, and then, the question is, is that with these resolutions, can it be confirmed that they did have their contract and liability insurance?
Well, Commissioner, you asked the same question two months ago, and I sent you an answer in writing two months ago, but I-
Two months?
Yep.
Okay, I forgot.
But I'll do it again, I'll do it again.
Thank you.
The, the bottom line is that every contract that comes to us either must have insurance, it's checked by Fatima Reed, or it does not get approved, pure and simple.
All right, so, is it possible, when that happens, that we can be, it can be confirmed that all of that information is in order?
You mean, you want that in the resolution?
I don't want the resolution, I want it in an email.
But you would never see it if there's, if they have no insurance, they're not going to get a contract. So, it would never get to you. That's the point. It's a check and balance.
No, but if, for example, if we approve whatever contract we're approving, what I'm saying, because I'm just leery, and I guess I'll vote no from that one of these, because, you know, I, I, I don't like to leave it just incomplete, like, and to me, it's incomplete.
The only way then, that we could actually meet with what your demands are, is to actually include it in the resolution, to have something-
Include what in the resolution?
To say that they, they have insurance.
Okay, so, but this statement is saying, you know, after forms of contract and liability insurance have been approved, and my concern about this is, is that this is coming before us with this not being approved.
That's because typically, it's asking for the board's permission to enter into a contract.
And I guess what I'm saying is-
Once we have the permission to enter into a contract, then we ensure that they have insurance. If they don't have insurance, they will not be getting a contract.
And perhaps what I'm saying is, I don't trust the department. That's probably what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I have a suggestion, Vice President Elliott. You could have your general, I mean, the alternative, I mean, the Anissa's office to do a review, you know, temp file, and see if the practice is in place, and Mr. Lopez would collaborate with it.
For, for, yeah, but specifically, for the resolutions that we're asked to pass like that.
Correct. She can go and test it.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Sure, that's, that's basically, just so you know, that's basically for every contract, but certainly, I'll talk to Anissa about-
Listen, she could, then she could satisfy Vice President Elliott.
Sure, I can have Anissa sit with Fatima, and then they can put something together.
And I know that, yeah, and I know that-
Thank you.
That I've asked about this before, but I'm just still uncomfortable with it.
No, that's, that's okay, we will help you with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
A, a comment back to Commissioner Elliott, just to help her understand, appreciate the issue. Companies don't necessarily take on liability insurance until after they know they've got the contract, because otherwise, it's an expense that they wouldn't have to incur. Keep in mind also that minority-owned businesses are, find it most difficult to acquire that insurance, so, more often than not, the district is helping them to find access to that insurance in order to satisfy the contract. It's, you know, otherwise, what we would end up having is a case of a contract, a, a, an agreement to enter into contract, get rescinded or revoked, and a new resolution will come before us with another company name filled in the blank. Why? Because that business couldn't get insurance, and, you know, what a shame it would be if it turned out to be a minority-owned business that couldn't get the insurance.
Well, I, I still would hold the same, ask the same question, even if it was minority businesses, so, I'd ask our board clerk if you can follow up with, uh, audit agenda on that.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolutions 354 to 356? No further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 354 to 356, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we go on to the next set-
Okay.
It's a little bit of a non sequitur, but when we were talking about board, bringing the new board member up to speed-
Yeah.
Tom Kesa, once upon a time, gave a presentation on how the capital improvement project, projects work, the whole three-year cycle, and all of the ways and times that a board member, a board votes on some component of the capital improvement project. I think it would be a great idea, since she's going to have to be, receive that training, that we videotape it-
That's a good idea.
With all of Tom Kesa's bells and whistles, and maybe a PDF packet that can accompany the video, so that any one of us board members could review it again and again, if necessary. It's a very complicated process, and it wouldn't hurt any one of us to see that video, see that presentation again, either, either face-to-face, in person, or by watching it, the video of it.
Madam Clerk, did you hear that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Also, you have, you have a video of scandals, I missed it.
This guy has a one-track mind on Thursday. Okay, let's move to consideration of Resolutions 357 to 374. Can I get a motion, Commissioner Evans? It's been moved and seconded by Vice President Elliott.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions?
Mr. President?
The only thing I want to, Mr. President, is this booster resolution I'm looking at-
Yeah, 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 I saw that.
Where, where is, where is this coming from?
That was a question I had, too.
Is this coming from the Policy Committee or something? Well, I'm all for this booster stuff, but this booster stuff, I hope it's not going to be anything like our student activity report, where people think they can just freestyle and do what they want. It's very well-written, and it's, and it's got great, it seems like compliance and stuff around it. I just want to know who, who's going to be responsible for enforcing this.
Who generated it?
Yeah.
Is this presumed to be a policy statement?
Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, I was kind of curious, why it came up?
Carlos Calabro and Mr. Yanis.
So, you don't know the origins of it?
Yes, sir. Dr. O'Toole.
I mean, I think it's a great thing, but, you know-
This should be policy.
What do boosters do?
You know, they, they help raise money for, for schools.
Are you lending some clarity to this, please?
This is, these are policy statements, this doesn't belong as a resolution.
And if you're not ready, that's okay, we can get it.
Can I get some more information on that?
Yeah.
Should we table it?
If we're going to get more information on it, I'm going to table it.
Yep.
Not because I'm not opposed to the, to the booster thing, but only if you read this, this may need to become an actual policy.
It should be, this is policy language.
Yeah, which I wouldn't be opposed to, because I'm, I'm a big, I'm big, I mean, boosters are big in the, in the, in a lot of the suburban districts, and they have that.
Who would be responsible with Carlos's office?
Okay, so, there, there is a motion to postpone-
Which number is that?
The second motion.
Three fifty-seven through-
Yeah, it's 364.
364.
I got it right. It's all those, right?
No.
364.
364.
All right, so there's a motion to postpone Resolution 364. It's been moved by Commissioner Evans and seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor of postponing Resolutions 364, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment on Resolution 357. I outlined with our incoming interim superintendent, a hope, excuse me, a hope that we would, given that we're expanding UPK, that we might offer more UPK classrooms in our buildings, especially buildings that don't currently have UPK, even if it means altering the stranding. I think it would be a win-win, because our agencies are going to need space to expand, to handle three-year-olds. I think it wouldn't be a bad thing if they were to rent space from our buildings. You know, it's a, it's a legitimate educational purpose, and, you know, if they don't rent from us, they'll be renting from somebody else.
Makes sense.
So, I just want to put that out there, knowing that Robin is in the audience, and let her know that I did communicate that, an interest in exploring that with our incoming interim. I, I don't know what the timetable is, this does refer to authorization to enter into agreement as opposed to a contract, so, the timing for consideration is still open, I believe, so, and I, I do believe it has significant budget implications, both for ourselves and for agencies. So, we need to explore that.
All right. Any further comments regarding Resolutions 357 to 374? Thank you, Commissioner Powell. There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 357 to 374, with the exception of Resolution 364, which has been postponed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yeah, I have a no vote on 362.
And you are abstaining from 357, right?
I'm abstaining from 357, that's good.
I also vote no on 362.
Madam Clerk, you got all those?
Is that correct?
So, did that pass?
Yes.
Yes, it did, but you recorded the, okay, all right, good, thank you. All right, we have to consider Resolutions 303, 307, 308, and 309, right, Madam Clerk?
And 331A.
Those are postponed.
Those are postponed, right?
Oh.
They are at the end of your packet. Can I get a motion to advance discussion on Resolutions 303, 307, 308, and 309? Move it. Moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by, come on, Commissioner Campos, let's get the last one. Yeah, Commissioner Campos. Any questions or comments regarding those resolutions?
I still think we're spending a lot of money on certain resolutions. One, $72,000 for a few months. I, I thought that we, that could have been negotiated, but I see that it's not, and so, I can't vote on that one, but fact is, I'm not going to vote in favor of any of them.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would just say, I, I, you know, I express my concerns with these, and I asked that the President have a conversation with our interim superintendent to get his thoughts on these, and had the interim superintendent said, said otherwise, I probably would have definitely said, I don't know, my son watches these things sometimes, so I can't use the 4HH word, heck no. I probably would have said heck no, but he doesn't want to disrupt the work already that is already started with some of these. But I do agree with Commissioner Elliott and sentiments that Commissioner Adams have said in the past, that going forward- said in the past, that going forward, we need to really look for other folks, local folks, that, that can do this stuff and really have a track record working with things locally, and you, you being creative about what we do want in the future, but having, having, talking to, talked to the President and him having, having the conversation with our interim, I don't wanna disrupt what is already started now. And I will say that this, this incoming interim superintendent, he was, he had, he led professional development for many years in this district, so some of you guys should be getting nervous in terms of, not nervous, but should be happy, that I'm sure he'll have a lot of questions about what we've been doing with professional development over the last thirty years in this district.
Any other questions? I, I can add, piggyback on what Commissioner Evans just said, I did speak to Mr. Lowengard, and we had an extensive conversation about this, and, and I should say to Dr. Vargas, you know, one of the reasons why we did that is because he would be, of course, inheriting this decision, so we thought it wise to speak to him. Additionally, your staff, I think it was, it was an ESA meeting, we encouraged them to get, provide us some additional detail to address some of the concerns that have already been expressed today, and your staff graciously arranged to have some expert sort of field, in the field, boots on the ground, a principal from a school, and...
Number twelve.
Number fifty-eight, and one of those AP, one of those administrators was an administrator who I've known for many years, she was my daughter's AP at Wilson many years ago, and I would trust whatever this person said. And she, in a very lengthy conversation, said to me, man, I've seen it all, and this professional development that they're offering is quality, top-notch stuff, it's not anything that I've experienced before, a great profit. So, for me, and I know you all do not know this particular person, her name is Ms. Garlock, but I've known her for years, and I would trust her with, with, with my own children as I did, and I, I, she really understands the business of education, and she, she, she understands the waste that occurs, too. So, and then finally, as I said, I spoke to our interim, and he gave the thumbs up to this, and so for me, that was, those conversations sort of tipped the balance for me as well. I, it's not that I don't share the concerns by Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Elliott, but I think in this respect, it's important to rely on the opinions of those that we trust, and those three people I, I trust.
Well, let me just, I'll end by saying this, at what point do we trust the intellectual capacity of the people that we've hired? It says to me that the people we hire don't have the capability of getting this work done, and we have to always go out and, and hire consultants. Somehow, we have to look at, if we're going to be going into perhaps a, a budget deficit for the next budget cycle, we have to be more efficient with the resources that we have, and if the people that we have hired on staff, that we give benefits to, then to me, it seems that we should be able to do it in-house. Now, I'll tell you, I come from a nonprofit, where we don't have any money, and we learn to do, many of us have four or five jobs, and we don't make a whole lot of money. So, I, I would, I would say to you, that's where I'm coming from, and to spend, and to continue to spend this money, and then don't get the results, and, and, you know, you say you may get, you'll get the results in this case, we, we never see it, we just see that the money's being spent. And I'm, I'm, I'm just not going to continue to support these contracts, when in fact, if we're paying people good money here, they should have the skillset to do it.
Commissioner Adams?
Yep, so I, I agree that we have, we, I believe we do have qualified staff and qualified intellectual, you know, capacity, and that it can be done, that this kind of leadership can be done from within. I also, maybe I'm just, I'm tired, I'm tired, tired tonight again, but, you know, we work so hard, you know, we really, we, you're talking about in the nonprofit world, you roll up your sleeves, I mean, the, the, the carelessness with which we can talk about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the trade-offs that that implies. So we heard the staff from Edison beg for the short-term intervention to last till the end of the year, right? So I don't, I, I'm sure that we're gonna hear that that is not affordable. So they've got interventionists in there, they've got central office people providing support, they've got counseling support, they've got SSO support and so forth and so on. I'm sure that it's gonna be unaffordable, quote-unquote, but there's hundreds of thousands of dollars here that, you know, and, and these, some of these positions as well, that are nowhere near the classroom. So I appreciate that you spoke with Mr. Lowengard, and that he was polite about the continuity, but I see us as having to have a little bit more teeth and a little bit more financial responsibility and stewardship when it comes to these things, and the trade-offs that are inherent, what we cannot do because we're spending this money. So, and, and with, and with regard to, you know, Ms. Garlock is a fantastic educator. I would, I would have considered, for continuity's sake and for consistency with the APP PR agreement that we have on file, a pared-back that focused in on that, but didn't try to have, you know, people from five states away dealing with student engagement issues. We have local experts for student engagement, you know, it's, it's just, it's really, it's, it's shameful, it's shameful, in my opinion. And as far as the one on surveys, I am going to support that one, because that is an, it's a clear-cut mandate, they clearly specify which surveys have to be used, and the district chose the ones that can be adapted by our IMT report, Department for Future Use, which we do need surveys, and we do need survey tools, so I will support that one, as much as I don't like it.
The only thing, if I can, if I can interject...
It's too much money for the surveys.
If I can interject, there's a risk behavior survey that's done. We were, I was informed about it at, at an executive staff meeting at my organization, that is done, but, and it's done by the students, and nobody uses it. Nobody uses those surveys in order to inform the work. And so I'm a little leery even about this survey, is it going to be used to help inform the work? That's the thing, we spend this money, and then we never, it never touches the people, or we never use it for what we're supposed to use it for, either in central office or in the building, that's the concern.
And just to, to sort of...
It actually, yeah, we use it in the Wellness Committee every two years, and in the Health Education, or Audrey, and one of the Health Education coordinator does, but yeah, I could see.
Um, I, I should tell you all that I believe that Mr. Lowengard has a very healthy cynicism of these kinds of contracts, and he's aware of your concerns and shares many of them, and he promised, and I quote, "a comprehensive evaluation of how we use outside contractors to do district work." But he just felt that at this particular juncture, we've committed so far to this, and there, there is value in this, as experienced by people on the ground, including our two deputies, that, and, and people below them. Again, my vetting this did not just include speaking to our deputies and speaking to our interim, but speaking to people who have experienced it. And again, you know, apparently, Ms. Garlock, she takes no prisoners when it comes to speaking about the truth about some of the stuff that this district has done. And I, I've known her for years, and it's always how she's been, and she, I mean, I'm not, I'm not taking this stuff, she swears by this, she does, and I personally, I, I buy it, at least it's enough where our deputies and our interim say, this is something we ought to do.
But she's not sitting in our seat with the inherent trade-offs, that's my point.
I understand.
With the resources that can, that, you know, I'm just using Edison as an example because it was before us tonight.
I, I, it's important, you know, I, I, I almost gotta let it go, but we gotta, we gotta be clear, 'cause I don't wanna promise you, but it's important to remember, although it still is a lot of money, even if we wanted to use this fund to get a social work, we cannot. Unless there's some kind of different rules that we were gonna research, so we gotta, I, I, we gotta make sure that when we explain stuff to the public, that they understand it. What we're talking about in terms of, is Title I money, so it's different than general funds, it's not coming from a general fund. I still have the same concerns, but it's not coming from the general fund, so we can't do that, because that, that confuses people, and they say, oh, they spent that money, and they could've spent it on social, no, we couldn't have. It's, it's, it's two different pots, so, you know, categorical money is different than general fund money, we can't confuse the pot, so we can't spend the money the way we wanted to, if I, if I wanted to, if we wanted to, we couldn't do that.
All right, I, I think we've exhausted the conversation, and we all are probably pretty exhausted as well. Can I get a, actually, all those in favor of Resolutions 303, 307, 308, and 309, say aye.
Aye.
No, I don't know.
No.
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, did you catch the, the note?
I heard, line number, and is that no to all, 303, 307, 308?
Yes.
It's no to all?
Yes.
No to all except? Yes.
I think under the circumstances, those resolutions passed?
Yes.
All right. All right, we do have one other resolution, which we're gonna discuss in executive session, that is 375. So, I need a motion, you have to trust me in this, 'cause I know our clerk will keep me on point here, we have to have a motion to go into executive session on Resolutions 324, 3, 331A, and 375.
Yes.
Can I get that motion?
For what?
It's been moved by Vice President Elliott to go into executive session on 324, 331A, and 375. It's been seconded by...
Oh, they're going to...
It's been seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. For those of you who are die-hard gladiators of the Board of Education Show, we're going to reconvene in public downstairs in the second floor, and at that point, we'll adjourn. Thank you very much.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, amen.